Welcome to the Volusia County Council Meeting. The meeting will begin in two minutes.
We're going to commence with the public comments. There is a, what's probably is if you would come down to the podium here, the microphone is already hot. It's the hangover style of microphone, so make sure that you can speak into that with your feet. This is, we're going to have this super condensed public right. Everybody will be able to hear you. Everyone has a microphone. However, for those of you who brought the synthetic powerpoints or...
Thank God, nothing.
You're going to be on your own. So that'd be great.
I can't tell the beat.
I'm saying that if it was a first speaker, I think it all sounded like you did yesterday. Paul Richardson. And when you come up, discuss where you're from, what area you're from, you are from, 11-26.
Okay. Good morning, Council. My name is Paul Richardson-Lamb. Now, we had an incident up here on September 6th. I talked about how President Biden was insane speech was wanting to get someone killed. It is my intimate distortion and rebuff. The man in the corner is a 41-year-old, Shannon Bryant. I forgot the pronouns, I didn't write. He ran over and murdered 18-year-old Kyler Ellison on the right, sorry, after a street dance in North, in early mornings of November 18th. Shannon Bryant claimed that Kyler Ellison was a Republican extremist. In fact, no one has been able to identify since the Ellison's political ratings at all. However, Bryant's facing four women now, Ellison echoes President Biden's insane September 1st speech. Now, you guys all know me. I've been trying to talk about the upcoming 250th anniversary for July in 2026. I know this all the way, but we don't want, if we're going to do something, a celebration for, for July 26th, we should start ahead of time at least. As you know, I suggest forming a five-member meeting based on the story to meet a five tasks to write the Declaration of Independence and choose, and interview one person per visitor. And the chair, vice chair, secretary, treasurer, and eviscerator. This committee will hopefully decide what kind of celebration, a fair, concert, a parade, or dance, or whatever. We should throw out the county. The committee, this committee won't take any public money from the county. It will only view public, private, sponsorship money and then donate the money that we have over to charities around Bruce County. Now, I've been talking with, I've just been Kevin, Kevin, about this. Now, I was wondering if I could go ahead and give me resolution or direction or staff to help me write this ordinance or whatever, what we need to do to fire this committee. So that will be presented to the council next year for the first meeting in February. Which I think should give plenty of new council members plenty of time to invest, to get in to do this. So if I can get the, if I can get that from you guys today, that'd be awesome. That way we can write it and have it presented to the new council probably next year so we can start planning and advance for the celebration, write this meeting in our lifetime. That would be helpful. This is Chair's mic. One, two, one, two. Is it?
You have power.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have power.
Try the other one. Behind the screen.
Here, Mr. Chair, just wait a minute. Check, check. I think you had that planned. Check, check, check. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Are those mics still working? Okay. Before, this is going to be an interesting morning. Before we continue with public comment, I need to call the roll to see if any of us are still here. So, Crystal, would you please start the roll?
No. My mic is in front.
Okay. Can you call the roll for you?
Yes, please.
Okay. She gives me the list that changes every, every week for order. Vice Chair, Mike Urban.
Here.
Pardon?
I'm here.
Benny Johnson.
Here.
Dr. Laverne.
Here.
Helen Post. Amy Robbins.
Billy Wheeler.
Here.
And Judge Brower, here. We do have a quorum. We're five instead of seven, but we have quorums. We are able to proceed, so...
Mr. Robbins, can you just clarify, because you're the only one with a mic, that Mr. Post and Mr. Robbins are not here?
We have a quorum of five. We are sure Helen Post and Amy Robbins are not present. Okay. The, this is a test for everybody out there. The second speaker in, for, what's he, what are we going to use up there for a mic? Those mics? We're going to use this if anybody on the call succeeds, I'll pass this mic to them. Okay. Second speaker will be Doug Pedd. I'm just calling these in order.
Listen, I'm a military, so the address calms down. That's more than a phase. Most of you know that I am a candidate for a position on this council under the November election. And as a candidate for local office, it appears that more people pay attention to what you say than when you're just a regular old citizen. So I find here to be to use this increased voice to appeal to this council for support of the five-day work of Bob Watson. I'm here today to bring attention to the Volusia County Veteran Services Stand Down, being held on Friday, November 18th, at the Florida Health Department offices at 1845 Holsonback Drive in Daytona. I want to ensure that every veteran and every veteran spouse and dependent survivor knows of this event and the support of that. The original stand downs were held during the Vietnam War. They were intended to provide soldiers returning from battle areas with a secure place to go, to put out a shower, to get clean uniforms, replace and repair equipment, and receive medical and dental care. As a veteran whose personal record is six weeks without a shower in combat zone, I can attest to the feeling of humanity that this simple everyday action provides. The spirit of rest, recovery, and care has continued with stand downs around the country now for decades as a way to serve a generation of veterans who are not treated very well when they came home. There are over 60,000 veterans in Volusia County. 90% of our population, and when spouses and survivors included, that number sloughs to 90, over 90,000. As part of this, and Volusia County Veteran Services, under the direction of retired Marine Master Sergeant Bob Watson, will be providing clothes, jackets, toiletries, food gift cards, career resource information, homeless, homeless resource information, and most importantly than anything, they will be providing veteran administration benefit information. Unless you have been involved in it, there is no more bureaucratic nightmare to try and navigate without assistance and to be a benefit and compensation system. The professionals of the Volusia County Veteran Services can provide that needed guidance, and I encourage every veteran in Volusia County to seek out their assistance. I'm here today to ask each of you in your capacity as county council members to support the Veteran Services Department in every way possible to ensure that we reach all veterans, to inform them of this event, and that this council does all within its power to provide the supportive resources necessary to ensure its success. I also add in conclusion that your item 10 on the agenda today is to support Veterans' Day as a holiday in Volusia County, and I ask for a affirmative vote from each of you on that. As a veteran, we always appreciate when somebody asks, thanks us for our service, and this is a chance to demonstrate that appreciation and to ensure that we serve those veterans who are most in need. Thank you.
Thank the Lord we have the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of, oh, I should say Monique first, right? I'm named to this. My name is Stephanie Cox. I'm here on behalf of a good friend of mine, Tom Heller, who lives in Victoria Park. He's a lifelong resident of Deland and has lived at East 18th West Chester Drive since 2007. His property is just under two acres and sits at the eastern limits of the Old Country Club. Victoria Park has continued expansion over the past few years and has come to join his property line with the newest neighbor called Victoria Oaks. The builder of the new neighborhood has instructed two large retention areas that are parallel to the common border. Here's where the problem begins. As Victoria's retention area empties, it floods my property. The water level of the flooding in the property, there's movement of the water level in neighboring retention area. I have monitored the water level since Hurricane, the last hurricane and the flooding covered my driveway and the bottom half of my property has been burrowing alarmingly, two to three inches per day. This is precisely the level that Victoria's retention is reducing. I'm confused as to how a project of this size, assumed to be engineered and permitted, would be allowed to discharge its storm water onto an adjacent property. As a taxpaying property owner and a lifelong resident of this county, I have property rights that require protection. I petition this council today to assist with relief from the flooding and believe it is incumbent upon the council to reevaluate Victoria's policy and blatant disregard regard for neighboring property. As I said, my name is Stephanie. I also live in Deltona, another flood-prone area. Deltona, Osteen, and Volusia County has a wide problem of flooding. The cities are all pointing their fingers at each other because so-and-so did this and so-and-so did that. We need smart growth now, not later. Deltona and Volusia County swore that it wouldn't happen again in 2008. It's worse now than it ever was. So I would appreciate the council's future guidance in taking care of some of these problems that seem to continually be happening. Thank you.
Yes, yes, yes. Keep talking, so use the hand. Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. Next is Cynthia Hale. And she waited.
Good morning, Council. How are you this morning? Now, bless you guys. And here's Alira on behalf of Journey Church. I always know me as a help to helping others, right? Journey Church has three locations in Orange City, Deland, and Deltona. Immediately after Hurricane Ian, we mobilized and helped the citizens with the emergency needs of the communities and made sure that we did an emergency action pantry. Again, we'll do one in October 21st at 10:00 a.m. as a drive-through program at 975 East Graves Avenue in Orange City. Our last mobile drive program did 200 families, and we hope to multiply that again. We will be providing food and support and also prayer. We also wanted to welcome all of the council members and help you guys to come to Church in the Park, and that's why I'm here. We invited Barbara Gerbich here to our church on Sunday, and it'll be October 23rd at 10:00 a.m. at Earl Brown Park. Last year, we had 2,500 people come and 300 baptisms at Earl Brown Park. And we pray that we double that this year. And we know that God really needs to be in our community. And we know that we're going to move God, especially because of Hurricane Ian, because we've had flooding and we had a community that lost food and lost provision and needing prayer, and we need to be together during this time of need. And we're going to come together during this hard time, so we will have food trucks there. We will have live music, and again, we have encouraging message that's going to come, and we will also have baptisms that will be here. And we can't wait to see you guys there. Thank you. Now, bless you.
Tess, can you hear it? I'm going to turn this off. Continue with J.C.
Hey, my name is J.C. Figueroa. I live in Deland to the sort of west side of Victoria Park. This is kind of my first time coming asking you guys for help and for some type of assistance, which I've gotten a lot of money, promises, and really worthless kind of help. I mean, it's, I've been there four years ago, asking you guys as a whole to slow down the development, to stop it, and to give us some type of relief when the issue was much smaller. I already hear that we had a 500-year storm and, you know, that's, that's why we have this flooding, which is not accurate. I had water on my property before the storm. The day before the storm, I had a foot of water. The day after the storm, I had over a half feet of water. So, we, and there's others here who surround, who are surrounded by Victoria Park, which was county property, which was annexed into the city and allowed a crazy development to happen, need you guys' help now. Like, we're, we're tired of it. We can't get emergency services out to our properties because of this. A neighbor who is actually involved with the county, Ronnie Bills, called the Sheriff Department the other night, and they couldn't make out because the water in the river was too deep. And this is not a new issue. This issue is old, and it used to be control, and now it's out of control. And you guys keep allowing developments to happen in places where they shouldn't happen, and this is going to be the long-term outcome of all of this. Has anybody here been affected by the hurricane that's supplied flooding water during this storm? I can't give the answers. We've been dealing with that for four years, actually almost five now. So where you guys have a little inconvenience from a hurricane, this has been my life and my family's life and my neighbor's life for the last four years. So I had a, I went to the city meeting last night and did the same exact thing, pleading for help, which they point the finger, you guys, you guys point the finger, the cities. I am a county president. I pay my taxes. They're always paying on time. I never complain, and I'm requesting that you guys help us.
Okay, now, put your hands in.
Who you guys work for ultimately deliver our lives better than the way that they should be, because this is a disaster. This is not fair.
You should be here in Channel 1.
That's it. So any help would be appreciated, any type of further movement with these developments doing this. You guys be able to drop one and start controlling this, because this is just going to get worse as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy Cantu. Is this mic working? You can hear it?
Stacy Cantu, Daytona Beach Commissioner. Good morning, Chair, Council. I was just here recently to correct misinformation from the county chair regarding our Daytona Beach DTS facility. It appears this is becoming a routine. As a city commissioner, you see, I hear a lot of political triumph. Some things really take the care, take the cake. Now, each year, you were invited to a Daytona Beach facility, one Daytona Beach city commissioners, city staff, Midtown residents, were there to talk about flooding and how to help. And Senator Brower, you decided to use the tragedy as an opportunity to campaign for your handpicked candidates. It speaks to a level of class, mindset, judgment, and public servant to the county. Any natural disaster or human tragedy demands decency and absentees from politics. It appears the lightning absence of real solutions seemed to permanent the premises when you took the floor. The town has had a flooding problem in some years now in spite of your select memory. And your question might be, Mr. Brower, what have you done during your time as county chair to help Midtown? The vice chair did step up and show up at Midtown to lend her support after the storm. A hurricane does not care about a political party or what area devastates. And according to experts, Hurricane Ian was a once and a every 500-year occurrence due to the nature of the type of the storm. Record flooding took place all over since reported, west to the east coast. All of Volusia County endured heavy flooding, not just Daytona. But this particular meeting was called for solutions to Midtown. Flooding proves that not to assign blame or look for a scapegoat for a 500-year flooding event. Mr. Brower, while you decided to campaign on our city facility, people misplaced, render homeless due to the tragedy are waiting for answers. At times like this, it is incumbent upon our leaders to put politics aside, united we are in the quest for solutions. This was not the time to talk about developing first taxes, while people are trying to figure out where they are going to live and how they are going to repair the damage of their homes and businesses. While at the meeting, your allusion to putting politics aside did not match your rhetoric. It was obvious, Mr. Brower, you prefer, had preferred candidates and a political agenda. And your leader is a person that takes a little more than his share of the blame and a little less share of the credit. No one is the blame for hurricane or the damage that it causes, but it's the action before and after defines the leader. But I will let our residents decide. You have a great day.
Is this still working? Yes. Normally, we don't respond to a speaker. Since my name was called out, I will, I will just say that I don't believe Ms. Cantu was there. I was actually asked to speak about the politics, and I declined. I did talk about development and, and flooding and took our emergency operations director, Jim Judge, with me, who gave excellent information and hope to the public. Our next speaker will be Harley Smith. Hardy, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's better than something. Harley Smith, City of Daytona Beach, several questions, and then a writer. Thank you, County Council, for this opportunity to share an update on some of the storm mitigation activities that the city has been involved with, especially since 2009. Daytona Beach has invested millions of dollars to address flooding, again, especially since 2009. There has definitely been an increased proactive maintenance of storm water system-related infrastructure. There is a very aggressive practice by the city with a great storm event preparation, such as draining down of storm water catchment basins are critically important. Since 2009, some specific activity that Daytona Beach City Government has been involved in at a cost of millions of dollars, there was a massive enhancement of the South Street Storm Drainage Pipe, a major project there. The North and Mark Street Retention Pond System was constructed, very important in that particular neighborhood. Backflow preventives have been installed throughout the city and major drainage areas. And I would certainly be remiss not to thank and remind the county at the same time of our $20 million partnership, financial investment for the rebuilding of Orange Habitat. That particular project was so critically important because when you saw the potholes on top of the street, you just assumed, well, it just needs repairing. Underneath the street is where the real issue was, and in that project, we found literally stormwater pipes made out of wood. Now, 70 or 80 years ago, these people will tell you that was standard practice, but fast forward 70 or 80 years later, all of those painted, all of ours ceased to function, and because stormwater could not flow through the pipes, because they all collapsed, that directly affected storm issues in the Gene Street, Caroline Village areas, Midtown, and Daytona Beach. We know for a fact that this project that it ended, the county participated with us on, helped alleviate the damage during Hurricane Ian and everything else in 2009. Northern Canal is a major contributor to anything happening with drainage and flooding in Daytona Beach. And if you think about it, well, it's a major, major issue. The city is involved with Army Corps of Engineers now, project, and lastly, we're here inciting the news council about the potential for the Daytona Beach housing authority to work with Washington to relocate residents in some of our most evacuated drainage areas, and we will be coming back to the counties to join us in supporting that picture. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Good morning to leadership on the council. I'm Cynthia Slater, lifelong resident of Daytona Beach, taxpayer home, taxpayer. I participated in that meeting last Monday, and what I heard and what I saw and what the residents of the community who were present at that meeting were not happy with the conversation that took place. But at any rate, I'm here to share with you the need that the community has from the Volusia County Council to support the individual families who were devastated by a hurricane Ian. I have been in my home for 30 years, and my house has been flooded four times. I have four parents of... I have four pairs of baby doors, that's how many times my house has been flooded. We are in dire straits in our communities, and we certainly need the help and support from Louisiana, from all municipalities, we are all hurting, and we don't see the support that we should have seen as residents and citizens of Louisiana County, as a taxpayer. It is just not happening. And so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time repeating what other people have said. We all are hurting, and we need the support of the county, and we're not getting that support. It's not about politics, it's about the souls and the hearts of the people who were elected to assist and help the residents. That's all I have to say.
Daisy Grimes.
Good morning to the leadership of our county. I'm Daisy Grimes, a resident of Armored Beach Florida, and I am here today representing the Louisiana County African-American Leadership Council, which is a council of 17 presidents of all of our African-American organizations here in Louisiana County. I stand here today to say that each of you have been elected to represent the citizens of Daytona Beach and all the other areas, all of the municipalities and the county areas here in Louisiana County. You make a promise on your campaign trail that you would do all that you could to make life better for the citizens here in Louisiana County. I challenge you today to pick up a banner and list all this flooding problem in Louisiana. Some of these families have been flooded three and four times, some of them have lost their insurance a couple of times, homes and families. I was at the Ocean Center from Saturday after the hurricane until the following week. I have been serving, some of you Billy Miller and Barbara Gertman, who have even standing in long-life feeding families. I've dealt with a mother that had a child nine weeks old who had just been discharged from the hospital, who had no place to go after this. I have asked you, I'm challenging each of you, call all of the municipalities, the federal, the state authorities, whoever you have to call, and sit at the table, and let's say we can solve this problem. You can't solve it being separated, you can't solve it based on political differences. You have to solve it because you took a role, that you were going to do all that you could to solve our problems. I did not get flooded, but I worked with families at the Ocean Center and the Ocean Center had to put those people out there, you were there, Mom. I worked with families over there crying every day, not knowing what they were going to do with their children. Each of you, I'm saying, that some of this problem is not beyond your leadership. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Daisy Wilson. John Nicholson.
I'm from Daytona Beach. I disagree with a lot of people that spoke. I wasn't, you know, as informed as you may be, but being here for the last 40 years or so, and I'm Jeff, more than once I disagreed with Jeff on his wanting to concur development. And the first gentleman is up here saying he needs to currate development. I was here when he spoke for years ago, and Jeff has often said we need to currate development. When we talked about the flooding, Stacy came up and talked about the politics. She always plays politics. She's like a, she's not even in that zone, but her zone is now double the capacity of any zone in the, in the city. The city can have 11,000 people, it can take in a municipal zone 10,000 plus. She's got almost 20,000 and refused to allow rezoning because of election. She plays politics all the time. So I don't know what you said, Jeff, but I know absolutely that you did not deny the need for this work. We've had it here several times with flooding, people, they have farms, they got to fight it out. You all know the problem flooding in there. Act it out, Jack, before you use your fingers, they're inflating. So this flooding all over, it's been flooding in that area of Daytona Beach for 40 years. Okay? I don't have a problem with her, man. I rage, I never use my edges, and they're inflating, but I understand that you can't keep losing your house every 40 years. But the question is, what is the city of Daytona Beach doing and how they come to George to work on a solution? We have to work together, we're the same, and you can't blame Jeff because something has been going on for 70 years. So I think you're saying, Jeff, that people are misdirecting this problem. It can be solved. What kind of energy water from the canal and ship it out west? Then we gave the pumping to the speedway that they needed. Well, let's just put a pipe somewhere underneath that engine. Get that water off, because it's going to be flooded again and again and again to solve this. So I'm asking you, give it to the city, give it to the state, the federal government, and solve it.
Karen Clark.
Hello, everybody, and I'm glad you're all here. I just feel so bad for all these people with the flooding, oh my God. Well, I want to say the roadway pickup that the county has hired is doing a wonderful job. The only thing is that for any of you, it's not the racetrack. They do speed down here, those big trucks, and we have hills. That's the only side of complaint, is that they're just driving too fast, going back to unload their, their stuff. Number two, Pat Northing, you shouldn't just have a single day, you should have a whole Animal Control, I want to thank the county for coming in with the most outrageously gorgeous, well-equipped spay neuter truck, and I know Adam and his team is doing a really good job on that. We had a preview at the Animal Control Advisory Board meeting, and I want to thank you for that. Oh, they're going to love it. There's one question. Walt Rubin told me at the Bay Ray, which everybody knows is the news capital of our end of the campaign. Why was the sandbag pickups stopped at 2:00 PM on the day of the hurricane at the prisons? It just stopped. And there obviously must have been a whole lot because Walt was fuming, and people who know Walt, he can fume. Let's see, one last thing is we're bringing in a cat show to the county at the Fairgrounds in May, 27th and 28th, and we're hoping that with a little bit of luck, Adam will be able to have that spay neuter truck there, because there's a lot of people that come and see a cat show. We were so good to steal it from Sanford. So they're going to be here, lots of people, we're working with the tourism board that everybody, that you guys have available for us to use, and I want to thank everybody. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Warren Richards.
Warren Richards, Oakville, Florida. I'm speaking for all residents in the county that have lived here for decades and never flooded and were devastated by it, who was standing up for their rights. Insurance companies are fleeing Florida due to our mismanaged development. We have let our wastewater and margin infrastructure go to ruins, all while developing our hydro cores and wetlands, diverting water from its natural flow for decades. We are the definition of insanity. Established communities that have never flooded should be addressed due to our mismanaged growth. The evaporation filtration, the process by which water is transferred through land to the atmosphere, it plays a key role in our hydraulic surface water flows. For instance, a mature live oak can transpire 40,000 gallons a year. A mature pine can transpire, transpire 50,000 gallons a year. Let's take a look at the St. John's River, the historical heights as a reference. One of our latest years on record is 1953. We had 70-plus inches of rain recorded by October in the Daytona Beach and in the Daytona Beach area, in which, which majority was collected in August and September. The gate height at Lake Arnie was at 10.62 inches October 14, compared to 12.5 inches on October 6 in 2022, with only 48 inches being recorded in the Daytona Beach area this year. Can you imagine what our county would look like if we had a year like 1953? That's not 500 years ago, that's 70 years ago, that is. Where is the leadership we desperately need to rein in our hydraulic flows? When are we going to change our development practices and start campaigning for our future flood events? This will happen again, most likely within our lifetime. The clear cutting for development needs to stop. We need to more experiment on development so we have a better solution for growth. We need the leadership at the county level to guide our municipalities in the right, in the right direction for our growth.
Pierre, are you still here?
Pierre.
Pierre? Yes. Pierre Lewis, thank you.
Good morning to the board to council. Pierre Lewis, 13 South Franklin Street. I heard that, I just add my voice to you, she's concerned with flooding. And the more I hear, I keep thinking of, when I was a kid, my mother would say, "Coming out of that flooded street, you're going to get your scout." Who promised that one was the cuss scout? And then a couple of years later, she'd say, "Come out," when I was a paper boy, "because you're going to get your bike all wet." When I was a boy scout, she said the same thing. That's four, 20-plus years in the Marine Corps. We ended up in a bunch of jungles and swamps all over the world, seeing how some of the flooding is in there, and then I come back to Daytona Beach, and guess what? Those same streets are still flooded. I pause, and I think of that, I call some of my Marine buddies, I wish I was there, and I said, "Surely, we've slept in swamps all over the world, that's a lot worse than Midtown. How did that water drain off?" Because as Marines, we don't just bring your problems, we look at solutions. So I didn't let most people do it, right Marine Corps? I went to Google. I looked at Google, and I said, "Okay, well, what's the concept of areas like, say, Singapore that we're in and in China? China has something that's called a sponge city. Let's look at their concept. What that means is that for concrete, where it's impermeable, they create something, for every sheet of concrete, they create vegetation. For every building that's here, they have these roof guards. So the water comes in, that area, that vegetation, it takes in the water. The ground, so we just know concrete is there, but once water goes over concrete, it stays in that one particular area. Or if you've had, by design, these sponge cities that are created, when you say concrete is there, the water goes there, and then it shoots itself and runs off into the air. So all that's possible is to just look at this. Look at that concept of sponge cities, how the designs were made, and look at those areas, definitely a good town, but all over that have those problems, and that would probably offer some solutions for it. Like I say, it's a business model, it's an environmental model, and if there is anything else, and there's those systems trying to fix ourselves that we have all the answers. Find the business models that work and then fix the problem, fix, but repeat that process. That's what it's always, "Well, come to me with the problems, come to me with the fix." So the challenge is, we look at the solutions, we look at other areas that have flooded a lot worse than we do, and borrow those best practices and use them in the area. So an old Marine, an old cuss scout, goes to the unit, say, "You know what? This is my mother, and my aunt's sister says, 'You know what? It's still flooding.'" As a Marine, as an American, as an American, I would say, "Thank you for your time."
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, if you will, that the sponge cities are a, are something we can learn from. In fact, yesterday, I posted articles about sponge cities on my personal page and the county council page, because there is a lot that we can learn. There's some differences in, in, I think the article I posted was, was from Arizona and drier areas. There are some differences. We have different soils, we have different elevations, and right now, our soils are saturated. But there are a lot of things to learn from that, about sponge cities, things that you can do, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Thank you, sir. That concludes the public participation. We will move to the consent agenda. Does any council member have an item they would like to pull for discussion or a vote? And I guess, Kevin, are these controls going to work? Ben, push your button and let me see if...
Yeah.
Yes. Ben is now Barbara Gertman, and Barbara Gertman is Ben Johnson. I would like to pull, just for discussion, G, because it's, it's, it's encouraging to hear about it, and then I would also like to pull for a vote, item Q.
Move approval for all items except Q.
Okay. Dr. Lowery makes a motion to approve the consent agenda except for item Q. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Billy Wheeler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And consent agenda is passed, except for item Q, 5 to 0.
I'm just going to go ahead and restate the motion for the record. The motion was by Lowery, the second was by Ms. Wheeler, and it's to approve the consent agenda minus item Q, which is for a vote.
Yes.
And I, I did want to remind you, Chair, that you do have a public participa-, public participation form?
For item Q, yes. Are you going to speak to, to G? Thank you, Carmen. Carmen Hall.
Good morning, county chair, members of the council. I'm Carmen Hall, District Director. Item Q is reallocating $400,000 in partnership allocation towards our disaster strategy. So this funding will be able to assist legal households in an area that's forced to bury disaster. The activities that are going to begin first are repairs and maintenance, and also insurance deductible payments. We also have assistance for housing payment for those that are displaced due to storm. Maximum grant, $1,000,000 to the household.
And the public can ask, access that through our webpage, Facebook.
Right now, we are actually working at the Disaster Recovery Center, so when individuals go through the FEMA process, which is a requirement, you will need to go through your insurance company if you have one, and then also through the FEMA process, and then our program is dying to help assist individuals that are not able to receive assistance through the programs that we are in competition with guidelines. So we are at the Disaster Recovery Center accepting applications in person to assist individuals.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and then on item Q, this won't take much time, we need, we need to do this in two parts. Tad, are you going to speak to the item itself? Let's, let's deal with the item as it appears on here, and we will get that approved, I think that's important, and then I just have a request for, from the council pertaining to the exhibit. Thank you.
Good morning, that's Tad, and here's your county chair. Item Q is the selection of a construction general manager to oversee the construction or official route required, including signage, visual key locks, walk-through to exterior moving simulation, steel haul ship, providing use of 8,000 gallons by one sulfur compliant tank. Selected by, uh, regular workers, all over the state of Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Lowery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five.
You have a public participation form?
I do, but not for this part. I'm going to have public participation on what I'm about to say right now, so trust me on this. So I'm just asking the, thank you, Tad. I'm asking the council to go a step further with this, but we need to do it properly and legally. I would like to, I'm requesting of the council to rename. Right now, it's the Marine Science Center Reef Aquarium Exhibit. I don't want to change the name of the Marine Science Center. I am asking the council to make a motion and approve a request to go to the county staff to bring us back at the next public meeting. To bring back to the next public meeting. Do I still have the handheld, because this thing is breaking up? Test, one, two. I'll just keep going. Can you hear me now? Okay. And I can speak louder, too. But anyway, my request, keep the name of the Marine Science Center the same. I would like to rename the Reef Aquarium Exhibit, the John Crisp Reef Aquarium Exhibit. And here's why. John Crisp was a... I thought you were bringing me a handheld. John Crisp was a long-term Volusia County employee.
Mine's the same. Mine's the same.
It's Jeff? It's not this year, it's?
No, it's mine, so it's okay.
Test, one, whoa, okay.
Scared her about that.
Calm down. John Crisp was a long-term public employee. Just a little, very brief history. I had the pleasure of training John Crisp and our current county judge, Terrence Perkins, in 1972. They appeared at the lifeguard station looking for work. Neither of them had a Red Cross Senior Life Saving Card. And Bob Wheeler, who, if you know him, when he told you to do something, you did it immediately. And he told me, "Put these guys through the paces, test them, and get them a Senior Life Saving Card." I looked at John Crisp, about 6'3", looked like Tarzan. And I looked at Terry Perkins, who was just like me, about 5'9", 135 pounds. And I said, "How in the world are you ever gonna get your arm across John's chest to pull him across that pool?" Water fortunately is an equalizer, and Judge Perkins did quite well. They both passed. John went on to be one of the most dedicated lifeguards that I saw, that I served with. He took his job seriously. He loved the work. He rose to the level of Assistant Chief. And then he transferred in 2007. He transferred to Parks and Recreation to help build the Marine Science Center. And all the displays there, he absolutely loved it. He was a conservator. He, the people that knew him, tried to spend most of his life in, in water. He, he was, wanted to preserve whatever he would see, diving, fishing. I just think this would be an appropriate renaming. We do have a couple people in the public who would like to speak, but I, before I ask them to do that, I'll just ask if, I see Ben Johnson, is anyone here?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I highly agree with you on this. The sad part is. And told me about it. And I think it's an old brainer, an absolute old brainer, that we need to agenda right back. And also, what I would like to speak. So people in the audience in the county can know what this thing does. And it's a, you know, getting a proper recognition. We have so much to do with it. Should we agenda this? Put together properly under this council, not after this council, under this council.
I'll second.
Test, one, two. I don't think it's carrying any sound. Hello, test, one, two, three. Everybody shaking their head no, do you want me to continue to talk? Test, one, two, channel five. Test, can anybody hear me now? And I'll go back to this, and I won't scream into it anymore. So we have a motion by Ben Johnson, second by Billy Wheeler, to do this. And Ben, that's an excellent idea, and I think Pat Coon is already on that idea of putting together. She's collecting pictures. If you guys out there have any pictures of John's service days. One of the reasons we're doing this is, you probably have guessed, that John became a close friend. He passed away last month, far too early. And this is one of the things that we sometimes get the pleasure of doing, is honoring somebody posthumously. He was also honored in his life. Just quickly, I'll call on the couple people that are here, Max Reed. Max is the only person I knew that was taller than John Crisp.
Looking squat. Max Reed, Portland, Florida. Hate to break up like this.
It's okay.
We were friends for 50 years. We matured together, grew together, worked together. I'm in strong support of this issue. Well, hope it goes through. And it was one of his, not life fault, but one of his favorite issues. And he worked at it for years. And he, he was very, very proud of the situation. May I have a quick question, second?
Certainly.
This is just one of the, uh, I'm a Twin City guy. Like I said, I'm so happy to break him up here. He's a big tough guy. Anyway. Thank you for this time, and I hope you stay through to make these changes. I'm in strong support of it. I guess Ronnie touches Max.
Yeah, you could just hand.
Ronnie, and I'll read Ben, but Ronnie, uh.
I'm sure he'll be charging it. Sure, you're a dryer, watch for the.
Thank you, Max.
Sorry about that. Ron, I was a foot arch, and also I knew John for 50 years. Great guy. He was also on Beach Patrol. I worked for Beach Patrol for 37 years. And John is a down-to-earth person. He transferred to Parks and Rec. And I believe, I'm not sure of the exact date, but John has such a... He helped form the, the Science Center. That was his baby, he used to call it his baby. And he lived and died for the Marine Science Center. Even after he retired, John would still do volunteer work for the Marine Science Center. If you know John, he was a big bruiser, but he had a really, really soft heart. And this, and John, right now, would probably, would not want this to happen. Very, very deep down, John should deserve this. He deserves this, this moment. So he did a lot for Volusia County. Thank you.
I think I need, do I need that? I do. Thank you. Test, test. Number five, test, hello, can anybody hear me now? Test, one, two, three. We're back to this. Lastly, I'll read this very brief email that I received last night. Can't be here today. I started a jury trial that will last the rest of the week. As a result, I regret that I will not be able to attend the county council meeting tomorrow to speak in favor... Thanks, Max. Of naming the Reef Aquarium Exhibit after a devoted county servant, John Crisp. John was a naturalist at heart and an advocate for the natural beauty and wildlife associated with coastal living in Florida. His devotion to that cause started while keeping our citizens safe on the beach patrol and extended to his years protecting the sea turtles and other threatened species. He was committed to the Marine Science Center, overseeing its creation, construction, and operation. Naming the rebuilt facility as a John Crisp Reef Aquarium Exhibit would be a fitting tribute to his contribution and an honor to those who worked with John to advance this cause. Signed by Terrence R. Perkins, Circuit Judge of Volusia County. And the, just a plaque, very short, that Mr. Reed brought up, was from the Marine Science Center. In recognition of significant contributions to the development of the Marine Science Center, we present this 10th anniversary Special Service Award to John Crisp, June 10, 2012. And just to answer Ron and Max, your question, he, he transferred to Parks and Recreation in 1996. And, and the beach misting, the beach patrol. So thank you for your motion, for your second. Council will look forward, staff will look forward to this coming back. I'll try this one again. Now we will call for a... Test, test, test. Crackerbox. Hello. Test, one, two. Turn this one off. Okay. Breaking new ground. Hello, test, test. Is it working? No. Okay. I will talk louder. When this works, it moves, so I don't, I don't. Hello, okay. We need to call for a vote. All in favor of Ben Johnson's motion to send us to staff to bring back the renaming with a, a significant explanation to the public of why we're doing it in the long term. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Thank you for coming in, you guys. Okay. That brings us to item two, and I... Yeah. My beer wasn't great when we started this meeting. We're gonna, we've called an audible on this. We want to also honor Pat Northey with Pat Northey Day. We have a proclamation. We were going to go outside and to, to do this, because we want this filled. We're gonna stay inside, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Kevin Caffin, Community Information Director. Item two and three are somewhat combined. They do recognize a very important former county council member. First of all, I'd just like to just apologize for the audio issues we're having today. We're working through those. And we're gonna just make a few changes with items two and three, and that is to present them here in chambers. So item two begins with a proclamation of Pat Northey Day, October 18, 2022. It was requested by Heather Paternostar of the Volusia County Cultural Alliance to honor Ms. Patricia Northey for her longtime support of the arts. The county council will break after the proclamation is read by Ms. Chair Jeff Rower, and will present this plaque that will be hung in our foyer under the Tiffin Davidson Award, which now is on the west wall in our foyer. With that, Mr. Chair, I believe you have the proclamation to read it. And Ms. Northey, please come up.
I can make one up for you.
Read the one off the plaque.
Yeah, let's just read the plaque. Okay. I think I'm glad this meeting's been recorded for all times, but... Pat, I'm gonna stand up to do this, since we can't go outside. You deserve the honor, and it's my pleasure to read this proclamation. Whereas, Pat Northey is a longtime and esteemed proponent of the arts with a long and distinguished record of service to the residents of Volusia County. And whereas, she served on the Volusia County Council for 20 years? And is the current Chair of the Volusia Echo Advisory Committee, which reviews funding applications for environmental, cultural, historical, and outdoor recreation facilities. And whereas, her dedication to promoting trails has helped the county's trail network grow to more than 67 miles and earned her the nickname "The Trail Queen." And whereas, at the heart of her community service is a desire to create a better quality of life for Volusia County residents, ensuring they have a clean and natural place to live with access to a variety of arts and cultural facilities. And whereas, the Volusia County Council congratulates Ms. Northey as she accepts the Tiffin Davidson Award from the Volusia County Cultural Alliance. Now therefore, we, the county council of Volusia County, Florida, do hereby proclaim, October 18, 2022, as Pat Northey Day in Volusia County, and urge residents to thank this outstanding woman for serving her community and elevating the arts in Volusia County. And Pat, I'm personally glad that we did this while you were here to enjoy it and all of your friends surrounding you enjoying it with you. Congratulations. Before we take some pictures, Pat, would you please say a few words?
Do you need a motion?
No, see how your speech goes, and then I'll call for a motion.
Well, I had some.
I think she needs to turn the mic on.
Okay. Thank you. So I had some for every horse, but like this day, it turned out, I couldn't have. Let me just say thank you to the county council and to you, Chair Rower, for your critical remarks. It has been honored to serve this county for 20 years as a council member and to continue my service with Volusia County in a appointed position on a number of boards, particularly the Echo Board.
This is the first time I've ever seen Pat Northey solid.
No, I think it's not working. Okay, we're getting another one. We're gonna try it again. Kevin's gonna have a heart attack.
I am, trust me.
So thank you again to the council. Words like words. It's been honored to serve this county for like 20 years on county council, and then to continue to serve Volusia County government in Volusia County. I am so honored to be part of. I am so honored to be part of this organization. The Tiffin Davidson Award is particularly a wonderful award because I don't know, I never once have you up here and the Tiffin, I'm not sure how many in the background, in the back behind me, were aware of his contribution to the arts. And in fact, the Echo program would not exist except for Tiffin Davidson. And so, especially humbling to me, you being served as Chair of that organization and you get the Tiffin Davidson Award. He was an amazing person that valued quality of life and absolutely believed in Volusia County voters. When we went to the ballot, we would vote with him on one quality in life project. I want to take just a moment of personal privilege and acknowledge my family out here, my family. I'm really close to my Chairman, Frank Bruno. Frank and I served together almost as old as 20, I think, and he did a fabulous job. And he is, he is absolutely supportive of culture. So, with that, I'm just honored to be here and thank those who turned out and she's supported me. Truly, I came a little perplexed this morning about how do I, what do I say, what do I do, but this is a real honor, and I'm very, very touched by it, so thank you.
We're going to get some pictures of this Northey holding the proclamation, and then we'll move on to item three.
We have one more seeker. I would like to run it here from Heather from the Cultural Alliance. Test, 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 test. Heather from the Cultural Alliance, we just asked her to say a few words before we judge Pat's, I mean, vote on Pat's speech.
Well, thank you all, everyone in the audience, to the Volusia County Council, to the Volusia County Cultural Council for supporting arts and culture in Volusia County. My name's Heather Paternoster. I am the President of VCCA, which will be next two years. Really looking forward to serving our community in this position. But who of you may not know the Volusia County Cultural Alliance, AKA VCCA? We are a nonprofit network of businesses, artists, and nonprofit cultural organizations committed to developing arts and culture in Volusia County and enhance and enrich the lives of our community members and recipients. Since 2001, the Tiffin Davidson Award has been given to recipients who have made significant contributions in Volusia County. And I know that you already do, but I just want you all to join me again congratulating one of the most deserving women and the Tiffin President of Volusia County in the 11th National Party.
Before we unveil the plaque, we probably should vote on it, and then we'll take some pictures, okay? I have a motion to approve Northey Day.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Would you unveil the plaque, please, and then we'll do some pictures?
Is this your box or something?
Are you ready?
I'm the Council, the big step to your right. That's the, okay, you guys take a step to your right. On or off, hit. Okay. We're in.
Okay.
Tip the top toward us to get rid of the glare. Yeah, tip the top toward us. That's it. Ready, good?
Let's get one more proclamation. Yes, you want to hold one?
I'll take that one. You want to hold that?
You hold that.
Yeah, tip the top toward us. Oh, that's hilarious. Wait, hold it down a little bit. It's covered, please. Okay. Thank you.
Family?
Family in front.
Okay. We probably need to get out here. Two people over there. How about you two over there? Okay, for the chair, give that. Okay. Good idea. Tip the top toward us again. Okay, don't go. Wait, bottom right, giant step to your left. Bottom road, move to your left, I'm sorry.
Here we go.
The floor. Okay, okay, gotcha.
She's been doing this a long time, she knows how to do it.
Okay. Oops, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay, Kevin, that took care of two and three, correct? Then we're going to move on to item four. Presentation, oh, this should be fun. With no PowerPoint, presentation of our economic development data for the third quarter of 2022. I can't wait to see how you're going to, imagine the graph with...
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Take out the light. Airwork.
Oh, sorry. Here. Grab it. All right. Out in here. We see aviation, thousand clear. We will persevere, all right? Good morning, Cyrus Allen Aviation and Economic Resources. It's with much pleasure I introduce Kellie Van Ever. She will give you the third quarterly update for 2022, and also happy to have the majority of our economic development team here, along with our stakeholders, so, okay?
Thank you. And, sorry, see if this is going to work for us. Close your cell. All right, great. If I start to yell, let me look. Okay. All right. So, thank you for allowing us to provide this overview today. I didn't expect to have a PowerPoint, so I had, in my head shortened my presentation, so you'll get the abbreviated version. So, what we wanted to do this quarter, though, was take a minute, take a step back, give you a broader overview of what's going on. Smart Asset just did a study, and if you look at the graph that's up there, it's actually a heat map of the United States, and it shows you where money is moving within the United States. In other words, the people who have, who have an income of 200,000 or more, they've actually tracked where they moved to and from due to, through income tax returns, to see where you're seeing your money move. This is done on an annual basis. Smart Asset just put this one out. And based on the color that's there, the darker the blue, the higher the number. Florida is the highest number of people moving into the area. Just between 2019, 2020, over 20,000 people have moved into the state from various areas. You'll see the more orange the area is, the more people who have moved out, mainly New York. So, with that, show the population growth within the state of Florida from 2016 to 2021 being 5.7%. But again, you can see it's been a steady growth as opposed to any jump during any one year. So, we're continuing to grow at a rate that we, you know, have been for quite some time, pretty steady. Then you can take a look at the workforce through that in Volusia County. Right, so we're going from national to state to county level here. And if you look from 2016 to 2022, you can tell, I'm really happy with the presentation, so you can show the graphs. It's got the same kind of an increase as we've seen with population. So, our workforce has been growing approximately at the same pace over the past few years. We did have that one deep dive during COVID, but it's been in line with population growth. We've seen our workforce grow as well. Now, mind you, this workforce still doesn't show those people who are not showing on the books in unemployment or employment, those who have fallen kind of off the chart. And we are working on bringing those back to the workforce through other programs that we can talk about another time. And this is the standard graph I show you every quarter. It shows Volusia County's unemployment and employment with the total workforce available. Going to reiterate that that yellow part that's in the middle is the best part because that shows you where we're seeing the change between the number of people coming in and the number of people who are employed. So, as the number continues to increase with our workforce growing, you can see those people coming in are also being employed, or somebody within the community is being employed. With new people comes new business, and fortunately for Volusia County, we have also seen an uptick in the business establishments within our community. Volusia County from 2016 to 21, we've got 15% growth in new business establishments. State of Florida as a whole has had 23%, so we're great there in line. Florida actually took a big jump, where Volusia County has maintained a nice steady growth. You'll get the chart, the line that you'll see there, that slope is a positive. If you want to know the number of businesses we have, there's now 16,000 businesses, and this chart shows you what that breakdown is with respect to the types of businesses within the community. This quarter, we're not showing the year-over-year change of those businesses within the community. I want you to get a feel for basically where we were in the spread of type of employment opportunities that are out there and businesses that are there. Of those businesses, 91% are 20 employees or less. Of that, 82% are 10 employees or less. So, needless to say, Volusia County is made up of predominantly small business establishments, which is something that this council has been focusing on this past two years, and actually has made it one of our department's primary focuses as well, which brings about the establishment of Volusia Business Resources, which is one of my favorite things to talk about. And VBR, as we call it, has had a number of accomplishments. Just a quick overview, Volusia Business Resources is the collaboration of all of the business resource entities within Volusia County. Those that are either educational, chamber, association, incubator, we've all come together on a bi-monthly basis. Happy to tell you that quite a few are here with me today in the audience. And we work to find out where the hiccups are within the community, so to speak, or the gaps, and we work to respond to those areas. VBR has been around now 40 years. We just had our one-year anniversary. And desperately in that year, wanted to provide you a quick summary of what we've been able to accomplish. As you know, we did a survey of over 500 businesses. Some of the survey results were in person, some of it was done electronically. But through that survey, we learned that there were three primary areas of concern to our business community, those being gaining information, finding the resources, which, you know, as part of those resources, we think that we communicate really well who we are and where we are. And the survey was quite an eye-opener for all of us to learn that there were so many businesses out there that really didn't know where to go for what they needed. And when they found somebody, they weren't always with the right entity, so they felt they were being bounced around from one entity to another. So, by bringing us all together, we've actually helped to eliminate that. The other concern was financial, and then the last concern was employment, being able to find their workforce, especially post-COVID. So, over that past year, getting together, trying to come up with solutions, VBR was able to put together teams of committees to work on those three topics. We leveraged all the resources that were available to us to develop solutions. Part of that was, as a result of that, we actually, the first year already, won the Florida Planning and Zoning Awards. We were one of the recipients of that. We received a $10,000 grant from Duke Energy to help promote our program. And in a minute, I'm going to talk to you about one of the major promotional things that we're doing, that we're very excited about. But first, I want to give the team kudos because we created team logo, team website, team awareness, team business input, team workforce, and team finance as part of this group. You have to understand, there's approximately 40 people that come together bi-monthly, and we come up with the big ideas, and then we leave that meeting, and those participants continue to work over the next eight weeks to provide results and responses to what we've talked about during our primary meeting, so that when we pick up to eight weeks later, we can move on to that program. The team logo group actually helped us with the branding. You can see the Volusia Business Resource logo at the bottom of that. It was done through a county-wide competition that used resources from the county to spread the word, but we made sure it was a county business that got the, that was required to win the award that was available for that. The primary focus out of all of the three for this past year really has been the communication and the outreach. We felt it was most important to get that down, and then we focused further on the finance and on the employment, although we didn't touch on that. So, today, what I really want to talk to you about is the outreach. As you know, I said that there are 40 some more entities involved in VBR. On October 31st, we're going to kick off the Volusia Business Resource Week, where every day from 12 o'clock until 1 o'clock, we'll have a live webinar, and each of our partners will get to talk about who they are and what they do for three minutes. So, it's an elevator speech, and we don't want to put anybody to sleep while we're at it, because there's a lot of people who need to speak. Each of those entities will provide an overview, will, every day will be a different group. If you click on the QR code that's on the presentation, it will actually take you to the list of participants in that, and a quick overview. So, you can see there's about eight people a day that are going to speak, and then we'll take questions and answers through that. It's going to be done through a live webinar, and we post it on LinkedIn, Facebook, and then we'll be making a video of it, and it will be saved and put on our website as well. There's no way that I can sell you all of the resources and the things that we have within this county just standing there. So, if you look at all of these people, you can see there's so many entities... So if you look at all of these people, you can see there's so many entities out there that really care about the business community and want to see them evolve. So with that, I'm hoping that everybody can see. And Barf told you that we put it together. Any questions?
This item does not require a vote, but it does require a thank you for work really well done. As you know, this has been something that I was looking forward to. And I think you did a home run.
Thank you. Well, it wasn't me. I have to tell you, like I said, there are 40 people who really, on a weekly basis, are working on making this work.
Just a quick question from the graphs. Is hospitality where it normally is or is it down? I notice if you go into most restaurants, they tell you right up front, we're short-staffed, service might be a little slower. Is that about where it normally is or is it down more than?
On the chart, it's about where it normally is. Those are the number of establishments, not the number of employees that are in that establishment. I would imagine the workforce is still a little bit lower than what it was before. But last quarter, we saw that it did have an increase and it's getting close, if not at pre-COVID times.
Thank you. Council, any other questions? Okay, the comments I hear, because everybody doesn't have a microphone, it's great for. And are you going to go right into item five and introduce? That is item five, correct? Proclamation. They're going to be presented in here now, correct? For VBR. And Barf, are you going to handle that?
I will.
Okay, mic.
So we are proud to present a proclamation. I'm very proud to be that representative to present the proclamation. Help it. Proud to present the proclamation to acknowledge the hard work of the County Economic Development Team, Haldad especially. Also our stakeholders, small business partners and community, the small business community. So I will read it as, whereas the Volusia Business Resources, otherwise known as VBR Initiative, created by Volusia County Economic Development to assist local businesses during COVID-19, during the COVID-19 pandemic, has been adapted to meet the changing needs brought about by today's business climate. Whereas, moving on from the pandemic, the program has updated its mission and website to provide detailed resources and how-to guides on creating a business plan, growing a business, building a workforce, and other topics of interest for local businesses. And whereas VBR Initiative has become a partnership of local business resource providers dedicated to the success of Volusia County businesses. And VBR affiliates include municipalities, universities, and colleges, chambers of commerce, workforce boards, and federal, state, and private organizations. And whereas, VBR affiliates will continue to develop and implement programs that provide tools to facilitate the growth and resiliency of local businesses. And the Volusia County Council recognizes the continuing positive impact of the collaborative VBR Initiative between private and public partners on local businesses. Now therefore, we, the Volusia County Council, hereby proclaim October 31st through November 4th, 2022, as Volusia Business Resource Week and urge business owners and residents to participate by visiting volusiabusinessresources.com and attending events designed and organized by VBR, by the VBR partnership, dated today, this 18th day, signed by each of your council members. And we are so proud of you, your efforts, and you're really taking this to the next level as you told me that you would. And I'm so proud of you for doing that. So please participate. Please let these resources work throughout our community and the seeds that have been sown become greater strength for our small business. So I thank you and proud of you helping present this.
Now they're being shy.
As we said, it really is a team. It's okay. We were ready to make it today to join us. Sorry. County Council stepped to your right. If I squish hands within, tilt the top toward me.
The top?
Yes, yeah. That's it. Okay, gotcha. Tilt it more toward me, the top. Okay.
Yes, Farv Girman makes the motion to accept the report, seconded by, the proclamation, seconded by Brett Lowry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, thank you again so much. You know, in my role now, I have the honor of introducing Monique Miles, the Small Business Administration Special Affairs Specialist. She's going to actually talk about what she's doing and what the FCA is doing to help our small businesses within the community.
Good morning. Oh, great. Good morning. My name is Monique Miles. I'm a Public Affairs Specialist assigned to Volusia County by the U.S. Small Business Administration. And so I just wanted to share some information with you regarding how the FCA has assisted the residents and the businesses of this county. Since the President did declare Volusia County to be one of the counties affected by the recent hurricane, the FBA Disaster Program program is making to provide loans to the homeowners, renters, businesses of all sizes, not just small businesses and nonprofit organizations. Homeowners are able to receive up to $200,000 for their property, for their home, home establishment. And that can include other things such as if they live on a boat, that would be eligible up to $200,000 as well. In addition, homeowners and renters are eligible to up to $40,000 for their personal property. So the contents of their home, their automobile that may have been affected, they're damaged by the recent hurricane, things of that nature as well. With respect to businesses, generally, the maximum amount that the FBA is able to lend eligible businesses would be up to $2 million. However, the FBA is able to extend that amount under certain circumstances, which if any business wanted, it would seem to be in need of more funds, they could discuss that with the FBA. And then the same with respect to nonprofit organizations as well that are eligible. In addition, the FBA has economic injury loans that are eligible for businesses, small businesses, and small agricultural cooperatives, and most private nonprofits and aquaculture. These loans are also up to the $2 million amount. So for the business collectively, in terms of all the cuts that you're eligible to get, for the most part, it's limited to up to $2 million. And that also includes mitigation costs. If the business wants to rebuild so that, to avoid this type of damage in the future, that can be included in the $2 million cost as well. And then with respect to homeowners, the FBA is also able to increase the loan up to 20% of the verified physical damage for the homeowners that is to the $200,000 as well. If they wanted to use some of the funds for mitigation as well. These are issues that the applicant would talk to the FBA about a little bit further. Now, in order to apply for the loans, the potential applicants can, they can call the FBA if they want to have an application, a payment application mailed to them. The FBA can reach their money under 6592955. Also, the applicant could go to one of the FEMA Discovery Disaster Locations. And the applicant would initially register with FEMA. And then the FBA is also situated in those locations as well. And then they can come over to the FBA and apply also. And then for, with respect to anyone who wants to call the FBA, if they are hearing appear, have any kind of speech visibility, they can also call 711 as well. And FBA also has its own disaster centers as well. And of course, if you want to go there as well. Now, the preferred method is to apply online. The FBA has determined that that is actually the fastest way to get a loan for most people. And the FBA asks that applicants apply as soon as possible, not wait for the insurance, the company's decision, or wait till they have all their documents gathered to go ahead and apply. So the FBA tries to have, once a person has completed and provided their documentation, the FBA will send out, potentially send out a team to confirm the physical damage of the property that was affected and respect it as needed. Then after that point, the process, the application goes to a loan officer who will discuss what additional documents may be needed, if any, further needed by the applicant. And as well, to tell the applicant what a loan amount, if any, they're eligible to receive. Now, there's no fee to apply for an FBA loan. There's, the FBA has persons who are able to help people apply for the loan if they need that additional assistance. And again, making a block of the loan right there, one of the disaster centers that are in place. And our goal is to give the applicant a determination within two to three weeks after receiving the complete application package. The first, the applicant who does decide to go forward with the loan, generally, they receive up to $25,000 for their physical damage first. And that is usually given out within about five days, six days after all of the loan documents are completed. And also, the deadline to apply for physical damage, that being damage to real estate or to other properties, the personal property, is November 28th, 2022. So that's basically two months from the date of the presidential declaration. Now, with respect to the businesses that want to apply for an economic injury application, that deadline is not until next year, June 29th, 2023. Okay, ultimately, the, who's eligible? So the applicant has to have, to live in or have property in one of the declared counties. And of course, Volusia County is one of those. Now, with respect to credit history, this is something that a lot of applicants might be concerned about. However, the FBA does not use a particular credit score. You don't have to have a minimum credit score. The FBA looks at the person's financial situation to determine whether or not they are likely to be able to repay the loan and in terms of determining whether or not they qualify for the loan. The FBA does pull a credit check, the credit record, but they look at a number of factors. And that's something to be discussed with the loan officer. And then repayment terms are usually, for the individual, it's usually 30, up to 30 years. And of course, the interest rate is low. Now, some businesses do have a lower term to repay. It could be as low as seven years. Now, with respect to the interest rate for businesses, that interest rate is 3.04%. For nonprofits, it's 1.875%. For individuals, renters and homeowners, it's 2.188%. Now again, the FBA is focused on a mitigation fund. And that's one to assist applicants in terms of that, to avoid further damages, similar damages in the future. So mitigation funds could be used for such things as a safe room, a storm shelter, sump pump, French drain, or retaining walls. Or perhaps if you did it, if it gets in place, the discussion you all heard held earlier regarding the sponge system or something like that, maybe that could be used as well. Something to talk to the FBA about. Okay, so again, the FBA is encouraging people, don't wait to mitigate to avoid this happening. And then again, the FBA has determined that $1 spent on mitigation today defers an estimated $6 in future damages. Now, the other thing is that applicants do not, are, they're not dealing with a bank. The funds come from the U.S. Treasury directly to the applicant once the loan agreement is signed. And they don't pay, again, they don't pay any costs. No application fee. Sometimes applicants may already have a FBA loan, and that's fine. The two loans just would not be consolidated. They would just have two separate FBA loans in there. Okay, also, if an applicant needs some further assistance, the FBA does have some resource partners, including SOR, the Women's Business Centers, BBOC. Further information is available at the FBA's website. And these organizations are in your community as well. Okay. So again, to visit the application as soon as possible. Again, the deadline for physical property damage is November 28th of this year. And for the economic injury applications, June 29th of next year. June 29 of next year. Now, to apply online, the website is sba.gov/disaster. You can submit again your application there. Again, come to one of the business or recovery centers. Any questions?
Just a quick question that I received yesterday from a constituent, who was actually in here this, this morning, his driveway's flooded. And so he's called, the question has to do with deadlines, maybe you can help us. The FEMA told him he needed to contact his insurance company first, he did. Well, they won't come out because they can't get through his driveway, it's, it's deeply flooded. So then FEMA came out and said, well, we can't evaluate you either because you're flooded and we can't get to the house to, they can see it in the distance, but how will that affect his deadline rates? I mean, what, neither one of them are active now. He's been flooded for four years, so it may not drain before November 28.
Well, he, he could apply for the SBA, for SBA loan now. And the rule isn't that the application has to be, the decision has to be made by November 28, but the application needs to be submitted prior to November 28. So it may not, you know, his paperwork and everything might not be complete until after that date, but that would be fine.
Okay, thank you.
So you should go ahead and apply now, he doesn't have to wait for that inspection to take place.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate the information. Okay, that takes us to item six, and Cyrus Callen.
Mr. Chair, I'm the counsel, Cyrus Callen, once again, aviation and economic resources. So, item six is for the approval to execute an anticipated grant that we are receiving from the Florida Department of Transportation in the amount of $3 million. Of course, the Florida Department of Transportation grants are 50/50 share, so the airport share will be 1.5 million dollars, and this will go towards the airport security system replacement upgrade.
And we have a motion to approve by Johnson, the second by Gertman. Any discussion or questions, Ben Johnson? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven. Yes?
Can we go ahead and take a break? Lunch is back there. Is that fine?
I didn't even realize it was noon, it's been so much fun. Maybe the sound system will be, I think we have a fried computer, don't we? It's a bigger problem than rebooting. Yeah, okay, if the council chooses, that's fine. We, we will, Dr. Lowery says, let's knock out seven first, and then we'll, we'll break. Okay, that's, that's good. Okay. Donna Butler, item seven, budget resolution appropriation of the Housing Choice voucher program. And Carmen's doing it.
Okay, county chair, members of council, Carmen Hall, community assistance director. This agenda item is for the appropriation of our Section 8 funding for the upcoming fiscal, or for this fiscal year. Our total amount anticipated receiving is right over $3 million. This is for our rental assistance that is provided in the form of a rental voucher. The breakdown is we have our regular Housing Choice voucher program, which is our traditional Section 8 program. We have 327 vouchers that we administer through this program. We also have our mainstream program. This is for households that have an adult, disabled member that is non-elderly. So we administer 39 vouchers through this program. We also have our family unification program. This is for youth that are aging out of the foster care system, and we administer three vouchers through this program. Is there any question?
Dr. Lowery makes the motion for approval, Barb Gertman, second. A quick follow-up by Ben Johnson, any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Carmen. And with that, why don't we take a lunch break? It's 12:08, and we'll be back at 1:10. Or, we could see what Kevin Captain is. Okay, we do have some people that have been waiting all day, from Daytona Beach and surrounding areas, actually all over the county, from hospitals, so why don't we do that so we can release them back to, to their work? It's item nine, a budget resolution and resolution authorizing imposition of special assessment against non-public hospitals in accordance with the county's local provider participation fund. And Brian Zaskin.
Good afternoon, councilmembers.
No.
No?
Yeah, let me, let me get a new. You have to use your disciplining your children voice.
Good afternoon, Chair, Johnson. This item is a continuation of a program that was put in place by the Council of May and an offer on its participation in the safety September. This is a final piece that will come to Florida this year. This program is very similar to our P E and T program, where by utilizing local funds in place of state Medicaid action, we can bring Medicaid to federal funds in our community with this additional program as possible, similar to the way that we can deprogram our citizens to do that levy of funds that goes up to the state. That is special assessment that is afforded to the student, is to levy a special assessment on the properties that the hospitals sit on, which are going to, to then remit those funds to the state for participating in the hospital's reimbursement program. As the slide indicates, I believe that's the flow of the funds in there, in an effort to get more federal Medicaid dollars back to our hospitals. All of the hospitals are notified, this is a public hearing as well, I don't know if anybody in the hospital would want to speak. So with that, I'll open it up to that, any questions?
So, also, we have Colleen Hertz, attorney here, if anyone has any questions, Colleen Hertz.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Barb Gertman, second by Johnson. I have a public chance to speak for Advent, Audrey Gregory. Thank you.
So, good afternoon. Chairman Brower and the county council, my name is Dr. Audrey Gregory, and I am the CEO for the North Region of Advent Health, Special Florida Division. So I've been in the role recently, probably I'm a year in, but I learned in my first six months how well we work with our county, and the great relationship that Advent Health has forged with Volusia County. In fact, Pat Norde said some of our awards. And so I do look forward to this continued working relationship as we think about providing quality healthcare for the citizens of our county. As a part of this goal, as our CFO mentioned earlier, the opportunity is for us to work together to care for our community, and that's why I extended for you today. I am in support of our efforts to establish the local provider participation fund in Volusia County. Your endorsement of this program allows private hospitals in Volusia County to leverage presently available federal dollars to close a significant gap currently seen as a result of how much uncompensated care that we're providing under the federal Medicaid program. On average, and I'm sure you probably are aware, Medicare covers only 60% of the cost of healthcare services provided by hospitals to Medicare-eligible participants, which results in significant uncompensated costs for caring for some of our most vulnerable communities. While uncompensated costs for care provided under the Medicare program have always been a consistent concern of healthcare providers, as you probably can imagine, the COVID-19 pandemic exacerbated the issue, and we've seen in Florida that Medicaid enrollment since 2020 has increased from 3.8 million to 4.8 million. So I would close by saying, private hospitals and healthcare systems in Volusia County not only provide vital healthcare services crucial to the community, but they also are a source of providing jobs for the millions of dollars in economic impact, and supporting the implementation of this program ensures the financial stability and viability of the hospitals and the healthcare system. In other words, this program will generate critically needed funds to support hospitals in Volusia County, not just Advent Health, and in any hands to continue positive economic impact being seen in the region, all with no additional cost to the residents or businesses in Volusia County. As always, we appreciate your continued support of Advent Health, and in many ways where it goes to collaborate in order to ensure that Volusia County residents have every opportunity to access high-quality healthcare in their local communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to adopt the assessment, and for the public to see this, this part, they'll see revenue of $8,825,000. We're not going to have that long, we're really a passive, correct run, so we, we will get that money out to where it's needed as quickly as possible. It's not something that Brian gets to offset immediately. With that, the motion by Barb Gertman, the second by Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Okay, with that, let's take a lunch break, and we will be back at 12:45. You want a moment?
1:15.
We will be back at 1:15, before the law? Okay.
Thank you for bearing with us, and you'll have to continue to bear with us, we'll get through this. We are on item eight, which is a quasi-judicial hearing, and we will, it's an appeal of a Development Review Committee's denial of a subdivision exemption. Clay, you going to start with this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Clay, I'm Director of Growth and Resource Management. The way we're going to handle it is, I will present for the staff, Mr. Diaz, who is the appellant, is here today. What he is looking at is an appeal based on the requirements contained in Chapter 72 of your Code of Ordinances, as it pertains to subdivisions. He will then come in, identify what he believes is the correct interpretation of the code, and seek approval of his appeal. Basically, what we're dealing with today is a subdivision issue. In 1976, Volusia County put in place minimum subdivision regulations. Prior to that timeframe, there were the abilities to go out and create these subdivision plats, record them, but you didn't necessarily see the public improvements that are expected with a viable piece of land being used for residential use, such as roads, stormwater, if it's within a water and sewer utility area, those extension of those utilities. So, what we're dealing with today is the Ranchet area, the Florida Ranchet subdivision, to be precise. This was a 1960 subdivision that contained over 2,000 residential lots, equal about 1.15 acres in size. The subject's property is one of those lots. Based on our standards that are contained in Chapter 72 of the code, this lot is not vested. A vested lot means that all the public improvements are necessary for it to be able to be issued a building permit. Because we don't have those public improvements, the staff does not issue building permits. This is based on an analysis that was done by the staff in 1976. They went out and literally drove all the roads in Volusia County to identify these subdivisions that should be vested. In other words, certain improvements had been done, 25% of the lots had been sold, and you had a situation where all of the area could be accessed by an ordinary passenger vehicle. Ranchet Road is a private road. All the roads leading to this gentleman's property are private roads. There's not a specific homeowners association responsible for the maintenance. So what we have is a situation where you have a road that leads two and a half miles down to this property approximately, that has no maintenance responsibilities. Those of you who've been on the council for a while may have remember the residents from Ranchet Road showing up several times complaining about the fact that they had flooding and inability to access their area. So, when this gentleman, Mr. Diaz, acquired the property, he came in and tried to get a building permit. That is reviewed by your staff in the Land Development Division. They reviewed it to determine if it was meeting the criteria in 1976 of having open and passable roads and all the lot issues. It was determined it wasn't. Pursuant to this Chapter 72 of the code, he has the right to appeal that determination to the Development Review Committee. The Development Review Committee consists of myself as the Growth and Resource Management Director, the Public Works Director, and the Director of the Airport Economic Development. We reviewed the facts that were presented in front of us and unanimously recommended denial of his appeal. He has underwrite, and again, under Chapter 72, to appeal that decision to you, and that's what you're going to be looking at today. So what you need to look at is the facts that were presented into the agenda packet that you have. Starting on page 8-11 is where we have our staff report. It provides the background and the history on the Ranchets. It also identifies that there were also Florida farm acres, which the county council approved in 1980. This was a smaller subset of the Ranchets, which they did certain improvements that were being privately maintained for roads and stormwater. Again, in 1980, the county council at that point approved that small subsection of the Ranchet area. That is why you see there are some homes that are constructed across the street from Mr. Diaz's property and in the immediate area. Also, there were some properties that were appealed in front of the council in the, subsequent to 1980, where there was justification provided, and the council granted approval for those. Since that time, we've realized that there's been a considerable amount of concern with development in this area. This is technically an antiquated subdivision plat. These plague not just Volusia County, but all 67 counties. What has happened in the previous years prior to the county having these subdivision standards, folks could come in and plat these things and sell them. And, you know, it's the old Florida land deal, $5 down, $5 a month, and you get your lot in the state of Florida. So what you see is that in this particular area, the reason why staff is concerned, and I'm going to get to the, this is a little bit harder to see out here, but the image on the left side of the screen shows the Ranchets. There's roughly 2,000 of these lots out in this area. We have a major concern with any continuation of development in this area until we have the ability to get under control access and stormwater in this area. Today, we heard about folks complaining about stormwater. Here's an area that does not have any, and does not have any ability to provide for it right now. This right now. This is similar to West Highlands, which was a similar area, but the big difference there, those were platted streets that were donated to the county or dedicated to the county. In this particular situation, we don't have that. West Highlands, we were able to put together a special assessment and go in there and do the grading and proper maintenance of the roads. Is it unfortunate that we are putting this burden all on Mr. Diaz because he is, again, an owner of a single lot? This was acquired by Orlando Realty Group in 2018 via a tax deed, and there was a subsequent conveyance to Mr. Diaz on that as well. So the fact is, is that what we've been saying to everyone who's come in and talked to us about trying to develop in Ranchet Road is that we need to see some way of getting a surety in regards to the roadways and making sure that all the conditions that we would normally see for a current subdivision in regards to access, stormwater, and those other things are provided in accordance with that code. This is giving you an idea of the lot that he owns. That's the image on the right. This gives you an idea of the zoning that is out there. It is currently A1, which requires a minimum of a 10-acre site, and the land use is agricultural resource. So again, when you look at what our comp plan and our land use and our zoning has in place, these are supposed to be larger lots. So the theory is, this is a smaller lot. It would be combined with others to meet the 10-acre minimum requirement. This aerial on the left side of the screen gives you an idea of what we're dealing with out in this area. As you can see, there is a variety of either pasture lands. The area that you see that's to the right or to the east is the old Kirkland sod piece of land, which is also being used by FPL for a solar facility. And then you see on the other image, a little bit closer up aerial, which shows the location of his properties, and it does reference the fact that there are developed properties around him. This next map gives you an idea of what has been approved by previous councils. So you see several unrecorded subs that have been there, and some of those are associated with Florida Farm Acres. So where just basically at this point is that we have to kind of draw a line in the sand and be able to, from a staff perspective, ensure that we're not adding to the difficulty in being able to provide the necessary minimum services for the development of a single-family home. So this basically is what Palos identifies what needs to be done as part of the review of the appeal. Paula, do you want to kind of go over the criteria?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, Paula Soria, and the work, senior assistant county attorney. So as Clay pointed out, this is an appeal of the DRC, so you are looking at their decision. So your determination is whether there was substantial evidence to support the decision of the DRC, and whether, essentially, whether or not they made the right decision. So when you do that, you take into account all the evidence that was presented at the DRC. You also take into account the petition of the appellant, the petitioner's statement of the grounds for the petition is in page 8-37, so you also have to look at that. Yeah. And those are the two things you take into account. You can also take into account any new or additional evidence that is presented during this hearing. So if any new evidence comes from Mr. Diaz as the appellant, you can take that into account. But essentially, it's based on the petition, based on the petitioner's statements, did the DRC with the information it had make the correct decision? So that's fundamentally what you're tasked with doing.
Clay, can I ask you a question before we talk to the petitioner? Are there any plans for these public improvements?
No, sir.
And if there were, who would it come from? Who would be responsible for it?
Well, these are private ingress easements, so there's no obligation by the county to go out there and do any maintenance or routine, routine maintenance or upgrades whatsoever. So it would have to be done by the private landowners out there. They could petition the council for a special assessment district where they would be paying their prorated share for the improvements and the maintenance cost.
And does that have to be approved by 100% of the residents in that area?
Because we're dealing with private easements, yes. Because what would hap, if this was public right-of-way, it'd be a different thing. But because it's private, they would have to basically donate what is in the easement as a public right-of-way for us to go in there and make those improvements.
Are there emergency services available in that area?
Yes, sir. Fire and EMS traverse the roads. Right now, I would say they have some difficulty, again, because of the amount of rain. I was reading that we're about 12 and a half inches more than we normally would be at this time of year, and so that makes the unpaved roads that are out there difficult to maneuver. Do they make service calls down there? Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I'll open that. We do have a member of the public that wants to speak, but before that, I think the applicant should be granted the time to speak.
My first time. How you doing to the council?
Just relax. You're all right.
I'm sorry. My name's Christopher Diaz. I came here. All right. Task one, two. Yeah, again, my name is Christopher Diaz. I've been a Volusia County resident since 1995, when my mother brought me down here from New York City. I purchased my first home in '03 in Deltona off of Howland Boulevard, residential home. From that point on, I've been in unincorporated areas of Volusia County. There's been Sherrill Drive, that was at one time and point a dirt road, as well as Braddock off of Doyle. So I've been very familiar on the unincorporated side, growing. As my son was born, I decided to go ahead and purchase a property out in the New Smyrna area, which was ruled for agricultural reasons, because I am also a feral swine hog trapper. So for agricultural purpose, that's the reason why I purchased the property at first. So I am there on a daily basis handling animals. I just recently was actually granted power for agricultural, which took a year to finally get that. So that made it very difficult running on a generator. So basically, from this point on, I've had to do everything by myself as well as it is out there. The community handles the dirt road from start to finish. In the hurricane, 12 hours after it passed, we were able to pass with bringing my animals back with a trailer on a two-wheel-drive vehicle. Within six days, the complete community had the dirt road where it was passable through a Honda Civic. So the maintenance that they have done has been beyond I could possibly imagine, way more than anything I've ever seen the actual county or private institutions do as well. In 2019, in May, there was a fire, which Benell County Forestry Division was able to get there in 35 minutes to stop a two-acre fire, which they brought their machinery with no issues whatsoever. They were back and forth within the next 72 hours to make sure that the fire was maintained. They had no issues whatsoever going in and out of that facility. Gentleman just recently passed away up the road from me, elderly fellow. They were able to meet them in ambulance with no issues. Again, once the hurricane was able to pass, everybody brought their animals in, and it was at least eight tractors working on the road, 20 dump loads of dirt immediately within 48 hours past the hurricane. So that was just one. During the last five to six months of rain season, the road did get beat up, but again, the community is out there every day doing more and more work to that, to keep the ability to have everybody come in and out, because there is residential as well as agricultural. So I'm just coming here today to say that they have had five or six other people that you've seen around me that have full residential properties. That was the point, that is the reason why I purchased this. It seems like it's not just this area. There's other areas off of 415 just like it. So for people that have been in Florida for quite a long time and trying to go to the right ways of doing this, it's like every step of the way has been a stop, from not only the agricultural side of it, but now even to the residential. Because if I can't get agricultural through whatever classification the county wants, then I have to go through building permits, is what we're here today. So even to have a pole barn for my animals, I still have to get building permits. So it doesn't matter what it is. It's everything is being stopped, and I can't use the property for even what it's worth with everything that I've already put into it, as well as the people that are around me. I mean, my next-door neighbor right in front of me, like I said, he's been there since 2017, which is a gentleman named Preston, and he had to fight for his right as well as to build. And they, he's an elderly gentleman. I know he needs help back and forth through the hurricane, and his wife were able to get in and out with their Subaru as well. So I mean, even without county assistance on the road, access is still fully there, in and out, even after a hurricane. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Barbara Gertman, did you have a question for him?
I had a question for Clay. You mentioned this is an acre in some...
1.15 acre.
Okay. And, but it requires 10 acres, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so the 1.55 is going to be added to some other acres to make this complete?
No, ma'am. That's at the heart of the issue, is that if this was a vested lot...
Right.
Because it was created and subdivided...
Right.
Before, and there's no other property that Mr. Diaz owned surrounding it, it would be a legal non-conforming lot, and he would be able to go through, but he would have to get variances for the placement of any structures on there.
Okay. That's what I, I just want to make sure I didn't miss something. Thank you.
Is there no prohibition for whoever sold this property that wasn't going to be usable? They can still sell it, take the money?
Again, this was picked up as a tax deed in 2018 by Orlando Realty Group, is according to the deed. And so they were basically watching what was going on at the courthouse steps, made their bid, picked it up, and did not do any due diligence, and basically transferred the property to Mr. Diaz two months later.
That's a shame. Yes, if you'd like to reply.
The property on my west corner, well, my west side property line, is now for sale off of a gentleman that I've recently worked for and a real estate agent. I obviously here know exactly what's entailed for that said property, but there is still properties around that they're selling off that nobody knows exactly, anywhere, shape, or form, how to get any type of permits or do exactly what I'm able to do. But they have it posted on Zillow in like at least four or five of them, and lots have been transferred my hands within the last four years that I've had, at least three or four times. So there's constant sales here and there, but I've been here for four years and actively using it as agricultural in those four years. And then since then, still, there's multiple violations that occur because of the fact of where we're at on this specific lot. So yeah, they are selling lots at this time and point, as is with no information whatsoever backing it on the permit side.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have a question, Billy?
Yeah. Clay, is there, have there been environmental violations? Did I read something about that?
Yes. And I'm going to ask Samantha West to clarify from that. She's the Land Development Manager.
Hi, Samantha West, Land Development Manager. Yes, there are environmental violations for wetland clearing on site.
And this is listed as a flood zone? No, it's not. Where did I see that? Flood Zone X?
It's Flood Zone X, which means it's outside the 100-year flood line.
Karen Clark, did you want to speak to this?
Karen Clark, whoops. In Glenwood, Florida. Anyway, I'm really happy that our zoning division is actually denying a request for change, because if I read it correctly, that if there were many complaints already in that area and proven things that were happening, like flooded roads and everything, I hope I got that right. I got it right. Stay with that. Stay with the denial, and maybe he can acquire the property next door to him so that it comes to the 10 acres that's required. I'm just tired of watching everybody chop things down, but thank you for actually sticking to the law. You know, that's it.
Thank you. And there's no other request to speak that you have? So I'll close the public hearing. Council, is there, is there a motion? And I know this is a tough one for everybody, but, Ben Johnson?
You know, this man may not pose a problem, but we're just coming through a period of time to where these unplatted subdivisions, they'll build in there, knowing that they will not have those county services, but then they, you know, they seem to forget. And then they start complaining about the roads not being up to par, the services not being up to par. I think what they need to do is start getting with their neighbors and fix this problem, then come back to us. But I'm going to make a motion to deny this request.
Ben Johnson makes a motion to deny Billy Wheeler seconds that motion, and I'll open it up for any discussion from council. This is unfortunate. Ben, I think it's, I think in this case, I agree with you that your recourse is to go to neighbors and get, try and get a special assessment to maintain the roads and to, and to purchase properties around it. I wish there was something we could do to shut down the land developer who's selling one-acre lots when he knows that he's, there's nothing that can be done with them. Anyone else? I just saw you pointing. I didn't know. Okay. The motion, and the second is, is to uphold the denial by the DRC based on the grounds and facts specified in the petition. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And I'm sorry, Mr. Diaz, but the motion is denied. We have concluded item nine already. Brings us to item 10. Also, an open public hearing, ordinance number 22-26, amending section 86513 of the Code of Ordinance to provide that November 1st be Veterans Day as an additional county-designated holiday.
Motion to approve.
Second. I didn't even see your lips move.
It's okay. It was easy.
Okay. Motion to approve by Johnson, and was that you, friend? Second by Fred Lowery. We do have a member of the public who wants to slow this down, wants to speak to this. John Nicholson. And Dana, did you want to speak before we? Not necess, okay. Sorry.
Sorry about this guy. This one. John Nicholson, Beach, Daytona. Sorry about this, but you do recall that you just went through a budget hearing, all right? You do recall that it'll be 8, 10, 20 million dollars that will be short. You do recall that we are on the ballot, the initiative, to take more taxes off your budget, all right? They're going to give, what do they call it? Tax abatement for police, fire, teachers, and about half the county will get another $25,000 exemption off their taxes. It's going up for a vote in two weeks. So when you do this, realize that it's going to cost you money. You do realize it's going to cost services to the public. It's a feel-good initiative. How many days off do we already have for our employees? You can only have so many days off. I know the Europeans get two months. Are we trying to go to two, are we trying to go to two months holidays? It's a feel-good issue, but I don't know whether you've discussed what it's going to cost, because I didn't see the costs anywhere. What's it going to cost to shut down the government for another day? There is a cost to that. Overtime, there is a cost to that. And I know you're in a rock, in a hard place, because you don't want to deny it because they're veterans. But what happens when the next one comes? And the next one comes?
We're denied.
Yeah, but you'll pass this one. But you can't deny them. If it's a feel-good, you have to pass feel-goods, because it puts you in a bad position if you don't. All right? No, this is a feel-good. It's nothing, something that we have to do. My father, grandfather, all my uncles, we're all in military. It has nothing to do with whether you're in the military or not. Having been a schoolteacher, I'm still going to... Having been a school teacher, I'm still going to vote no on the special exemption for police, fire, schoolteachers because we just can't keep putting the exceptions. I think there's what? 280, $300,000 in exemptions so far from taxes? And our average homes are only 385? So we should be very cognizant whenever we lower the amount of money coming into the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify one thing, we, we don't shut down the government completely when, when there's a holiday like this. If you need an ambulance, a fire truck. There's lots of services that continue on, but George Rectumall, do you want to?
Yeah. I just want to comment. We did discuss this in budget time. Actually, I asked for permission before the budget to include that as a proposal. So we did, and it is figured in. You're correct. It will cause overtime in the protective services category. I can get you the number. I just don't have it off the top of my head right now. But it is figured in the budget. We, it'll be our 10th holiday and most of the places around us are at 10. And it was contemplated also as a recruiting tool, part of our package, part of a package to have people here. So, but that was, the idea was to be competitive with some of the other agencies.
Thank you. Barb Gertman.
I'm with George. I think there's a cost to not acknowledging the needs of our staff and not only be more competitive, but also acknowledging where we are in the hiring and the maintaining and the morale and the things that employees need to feel supported by their employers. And I think it is, it is time for that. So I certainly support it.
Ben Johnson.
I'm not a military veteran, but I very much appreciate what the military veterans have done for us and given us and given us freedom. Military veterans are a proud group, sometimes a forgotten group. And in the past, they were even a villainized group unjustly. And I think we need to do things to make sure that they know that we know who they are. We appreciate them and we thank them for what they have done to this great, for this great country. And without them, where we would be. We would not be this country. So I very much support this and I think that, you know, what we can do to recognize our veterans is important.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Johnson, second by Lowery. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And the motion is approved, five to zero. Which brings us to item 11. Also, an open public hearing. Ordinance 22-24, amendment to the zoning ordinance, article 2, division 6, nonconformities. Clay Irvin.
Good afternoon, Clay Irvin, Director of Growth and Resource Management. With me is Carol McFarland, Director of Planning and Development Services Division. This is coming to you at the request of the staff because what we and our, and your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. Last year, we reviewed approximately 20 variances as they pertain to variances to allow for the creation of nonconforming lots. And what you see in front of you today, right now, is what we're talking about in, in order to make things easier for our residents. This is affecting the general public as they own their property. And if you can work with me as I go through and try and describe what we're talking about. If, if at some point, nonconforming lots were held in ownership by a single entity, be a person or a corporation, per our code, they're automatically considered grouped together and cannot be sold independently. This is a standard practice that is utilized by cities and counties anywhere that they have zoning regulations. The main goal is that if you have property which has not been developed, that you can group it together so that that way, when it does become developed, it complies with the zoning. Where we're having the breakdown is with some of these existing subdivisions and divisions of lands which occurred prior to the zoning ordinance and had building permits issued for single-family homes. We see it in the rural area. Here's an example of one of our variances from last year. This was again, two five-acre tracts in an area zoned A1. Both parcels had single-family homes on them, but when the owner of the northern parcel came in to try and get a building permit, their nonconforming lot letter showed that at some point, their property was owned with the adjacent property. And so they had to go through a variance. The variance tax on at least 60, sometimes up to 90 days, and requires a payment of a thousand bucks roughly for that process, not including the delays that it may have in getting your final building permit, but it also includes the survey data. So therefore, what you're seeing is there's a delay to these folks. Here's another example, and this is in Norman, excuse me, down Wilbur by the sea, or excuse me, Bethune Beach, where we had a similar type of variance, where again, you had platted subdivided lots with a structure built on them. And when the subdivision was approved, there was not a nonconformance. It's only once we applied our unified zoning that the nonconformance became existent. So therefore, what we're trying to do is minimize the impact on our general public who are buying these homes and may not realize it until two, three, four years later when they come in to try and get a building permit for an expansion or an upgrade. Then all of a sudden, they find out that at some point in the history of their property and the adjacent property, it was owned under one person. And as such, they had to go through this variance to create it. We're not ignoring the nonconformity. What we're just doing is allowing it for staff approval if it's, again, an existing structure on a subdivided lot that meets all the other criteria. The whole point behind this is that those 20 variances probably would not have had to have gone to the PLDRC and those folks would not have had that delay and that time expense. So our primary goal is to help the general public right now. If there's any questions, I will be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by, was it Johnson? Or do you want to take it? Clay, I would, I would bet that probably every council member here has sat in at a PLDRC meeting for one reason or another. I have, and it is, you talk about heartbreaking sometimes, what a property owner has to come in and ask permission for that they never anticipated, were never told. So I think this is good for the public. I also think it will free up your office to be able to handle the weightier things that we need to do too because it's overwhelming at times. So I think it cuts both ways. And I'm, I'm glad for the, the motion to approve. You have no requests to speak. I'll close the public hearing. There's no other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries five to zero. Item 12. Clay, you're going to be with us for a while. Resolution rezoning 22.7 acres located at 1776 Lightfoot Lane.
Yes, sir. This is the Pioneer Settlement. This is a former school site that's located up in Seville. What you're seeing is that the subject property was originally developed as a school, had an R4 zoning, which is a residential, basically 7,500 square foot lot type of development. Schools are allowed in that zoning district, so therefore, it wasn't a major issue. Now that we've shifted to a museum and historic site where they go and basically talk about the settlement of this area and relive a lot of their history. It was discovered when a group was trying to establish a classic car garage so that they could, you know, show some of the history behind that that has occurred out there, that we discovered that there was really kind of a mistake in the zoning and that this site really does need to have the C zoning. Now, to clarify, Conservation is the name of the zoning classification we're sending it to or requesting. That does allow for museums and historic sites to be a part of it. It also gives them greater flexibility in the future as they go forward. If they need to make improvements or expand or modify, this will be much, much easier for them to do. So we feel that it's appropriate. It was sent to your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission with a recommendation of approval. It's coming to you with unanimous as well from them.
Motion to approve.
They beat you, Ben. Motion to approve by Barb Gertman, second by Billy Wheeler. And that takes Ben Johnson off. I'm also glad to, to see this. Clay, you and your office were essential, helpful to this museum group, which is mostly older Volusia County members, some above 100 years old, who, I think it caught all of us surprised that, you know, the Pioneer Art Settlement is a wonderful place. If you haven't visited there, go visit in Barberville and almost on the corner of 44 or 40 and 17. It's a great place. This is a great move and it clears it up and allows them to go ahead. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, I did not ask. This is a quasi judicial. Does anyone have anything to declare besides me? Okay. I, I did go and, and viewed the location, talked to the people, the wonderful people, and, and asked for Clay's help, which his office did. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? It's approved, five to zero. Which brings us to item 13. Nope, that was 12. This is a resolution, which is also a quasi judicial hearing. Resolution rezoning 1.15 acre parcel located at 641 Lake Florian Drive.
Once again, Clay Irvin, also Carol McFarland joining me. The subject property has got a split zoning which creates a problem for the development of it. It does not meet the minimum requirement of one of the zoning classifications, the A1. And as you can see, it's located kind of on the edge of where you have some suburban-type development and then to the east, you have more rural development going on. As you can see, there's properties to the south, south of Lake Florian that have similar type of zoning which is being requested for the entire parcel, which is A3. The A3 requires only one acre, whereas the A11 requires a 10-acre standard. We feel that getting rid of the split zoning, having the zoning follow the property line and allowing for the property owner to have the ability to utilize the whole property for a single-family home makes sense. It was sent forward to your Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission with a recommendation of approval. They followed suit unanimously. If there's any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
The applicant's not here.
I thought she was here.
Do they wish to speak? Is there any, any requests from the public to speak? Nope, okay. Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Johnson.
It's positive.
It is. Yeah, I said that at the beginning. What I didn't ask is if anybody had anything to declare. I do not. Okay. No other discussion. All in favor of approving the resolution, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Which brings us to item 14, also a quasi judicial hearings. So I will open the public hearing. And Clay Irvin, if you'd like to lay this out for us.
Yes, sir. The property owners acquired 17.1 acres in this area. It's currently zoned RR, Rural Residential, which allows for hobby farming, but does not allow for true agricultural uses. They seek to use the property for true agricultural uses. They've identified the growing of ornamentals, flowers as the primary purpose behind this. So staff reviewed it. There is area out there that's consistent with the A2 zoning, so we're not creating a spot zoning situation. It's consistent with the land use. So staff recommended approval to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission. The Planning and Land Development Regulation Commission followed suit and unanimously recommended approval. This is actually, would be technically a downzoning because it does reduce the amount of development that could occur, but it does allow for a greater expansion of the potential agricultural uses. And I know the applicants are here. If there's any questions for them, I'm sure they'll be glad to answer them.
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve by Wheeler, second by Lowery. Does anyone have any expertise to declare? You said the owners are here or the? I don't want to embarrass you, but would you mind coming up a second? I, I want to, I just want to find out if what I read or heard is true, that you're going to grow flowers?
Yes, cut flowers.
In the ground?
Yeah, in the ground.
Welcome to Volusia County. You don't know how happy that makes me.
I've been here since 89.
And it tells me, it tells me you are a really tough couple and, and good farmers because it's, it's, it's a difficult crop, a beautiful crop. So I wish you all the luck in the world. I think you're about to be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for choosing Volusia for your, for your business.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And Clay is done. And Tad is in the room? Is Tad in the house? Or is he not going to do the item 15? Also, a quasi judicial hearing. Resolution of proposed vacation of a portion of the platte of WB Titus subdivision. Yes, this is one of those days.
We can move on to 16 if counsel's pleasure, if you like.
Should we wait? He's coming?
Item 16 is more exciting though.
Oh, it is.
Apologies.
Yeah. You're going to be scolded by the council.
Item 15, Tad Kaysbeer, county engineer. Which one?
And don't use any B or P words.
I've got a long list of words I'm not allowed to use. Tad Kaysbeer, county engineer. Item 15 is a request from a property owner to vacate a portion of Eden Avenue, which separates their property on the south end and then also allows them to straighten out some issues that they've got where their portion of their building is in the right-of-way. Duval Home has a couple of different structures that are located within the Eden Avenue right-of-way and they are looking to potentially sell that particular property. So as a part of that, they'd like to get that fixed up. They've worked with the adjacent property owners to come to an agreement and so they jointly are requesting the petitioning to the county to vacate that section of road. That section of road is unimproved. The county doesn't have a need for it and we're recommending approval.
Motion to approve by Gertman, second by Wheeler. Does anyone have any expertise to declare? And there is none. The owner did not care to speak. It's not required. If you would like to.
My name is Kirk Bauer and I'm here on behalf of Duval Homes, 505 East New York Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. The king of brevity. Any other discussion? All in favor of approval of the vacation? I'm sorry? Kirk Bauer? He did speak. Yes, when you get up here, just tell her, tell us who you are, and what area you're from, and you have three minutes.
Very short. Hello, I'm Janice Ferguson. I'm the property owner on the east side of the right-of-way that's being vacated. There was no discussion about how that vacation is going to affect me. I was told that I would be receiving 50 feet of that vacation, but that was not clarified in this discussion. Is that the way it is going to go?
Tad, can you clarify that?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Yes, ma'am. That is consistent with, when the plat creates this road section, each property owner in each side of the road gets half of it. So yes, you will get 50, they will get 50 through that section, where you own the eastern side. And then, for clarity, can you put the aerial backup that was just up there? The property to the south of you, it's the same situation with Negret, and I'm sure I'm not saying that right. They'll get 50, Duval will get 50, so, yes.
I wanted that on the record.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad it went that way. Okay. I will close the public hearing. If there's no other discussion, all in favor of approving this vacation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the vacation is approved, five to zero. Thank you for coming in. Item 16, not a judicial. Ordinance 2022-29, amending cause of action provision of civil rights ordinance to conform with court decision.
Good afternoon, Andrea Carr, Assistant County Attorney. We are proposing this amendment to update our current civil rights ordinance to conform to a court case, and clarify that all of the conditions that currently exist under the state law need, still need to be followed before a cause of action can be filed in a court of law.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve by Johnson, second by Wheeler. Is there any request from the public to speak? I will close the public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Well done.
That was so exciting.
It was. Attorney Dyer was certain it would be.
She didn't lose any heat.
Tad, for item 17, resolution closing of the land, Old Deland Road, east of Fire Tower. This was a carryover from our last council meeting.
Yes, sir. Again, Tad Kaysbeer, county engineer. As you said, this is a revised resolution per the direction from the council at the last meeting. It includes the severing or closing of the connection of Old Deland Road with the proposed access road for the Sun Gate Logistics Park. It also includes the signage such that restricts trucks from the use of Old Deland Road east of the access road. And so, we've also put in this time around, we had noted that we were going to do it as part of any use permit, but we've gone ahead and put it in the resolution that would require the developer to prepare a second phase, or prior to their second phase, a new traffic study based on their actual traffic counts, so.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. If I can get my pen to work, from Johnson, second by Wheeler. We do have a member of the public who would like to speak, and also a resident of the area. Robert Judd, would you like to speak?
My name is Robert, oops, Robert Judd, 3505 Old Deland Road, as a resident for the last 11 years. And as a former schoolteacher, I'd like to give everyone on the council today the gold star for how patient you have been in handling matters under very stressful times. And you guys did well, too. Catching the ball in midair.
Yes.
Basically, in the file number 10296, just as General just mentioned, under the summary highlights, the line two says, "Truck traffic will not be allowed on Old Deland Road east of the proposed access road," which is wonderful, except it's very vague. And I had mentioned at the last meeting that I hope you would put signage at the Old Deland Road and International Speedway Boulevard intersection, based on the idea of closing off the traffic. I'm concerned that my neighbors have been putting up with a lot of truck traffic, turning down Educators Road, which is a 10-foot wide lane, and not really constructed for heavy traffic. So I would like to see that change made. And my thanks to the developers and their cooperation in all of this. Thank you.
Tad, can you shed more light on that? I heard you mention signage, but-
Yeah, we would require that the developer install the signage on our behalf, but yes, it would be at Old Deland Road at the intersection of 92, and then at Educators Way again. We're obviously not trying to prohibit, you know, delivery trucks, those types of things, FedEx, garbage, those types of things, but everything else would be prohibited, non-local truck traffic.
Does that speak, does that speak directly to your question? He's thumbs up? Okay.
Yes, that's it. Again, the cooperation is very, very appreciated.
Yes, thank you. We have a motion to approve by Johnson, second by Wheeler, all in favor. Is any other discussion? No public, other public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. That brings us to 17A. Let me get out of here. Okay, can I say Paulo? I can, if I turn my head. I've asked Paulo to give us a brief synopsis of the legal report that he wrote, and I just want to set the stage for the council. My intention here is to clear up some public misunderstanding, I think, about toilet-to-tap, and make it, make it clear as far as what's legally possible, what's not. There is concern that, I'm hearing from the public, each of you have probably heard concern one way or another, too, and your input and opinions are just as valuable and welcome as mine. I just, I wanted to get a final hearing on this, so that the public knows exactly where it stands.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Paulo Soria, Senior Assistant County Attorney. So this is a supplemental item from the chair, and this is regarding a memo that our office, or your legal department, provided to council on August 15th regarding what we're calling potable reuse. Cloakly, it's kind of known as toilet-to-tap, or flush-to-faucet, you know, something cute like that. Essentially, we examined the county's ability to regulate potable reuse, and looked at the recent changes on the state level regarding potable reuse. So fundamentally, it boils down to this. Within the county's service area, and that's kind of important, service area is not the unincorporated area, it is essentially where we have control over and provide utility services. Within that area, the county has the authority to regulate black water. So black water is, essentially, it is a component of the domestic wastewater system, and it comes from your toilets, your urinals, and your kitchen waste. Everything else that comes from your residence is kind of called gray water. And your traditional waste that's produced and treated at your wastewater facility, you know, it all comes, it all mixes together, so there's not, and that is usually used and treated to a certain level, and right now, it's kind of used to water for irrigation purposes. So in 2020 and 2021, the legislature started to kind of direct the DEP to start drafting rules for potential potable reuse, because they, they kind of took a look around and said, okay, we may have to do this later on. So right now, the rulemaking is in place. So what it does is, is getting back, the county can regulate within its own service area, black water. It cannot regulate how the other municipalities and the other municipal utilities regulate potable reuse. Additionally, if a developer comes in and puts in a gray water system, it essentially creates a development that essentially separates your, your kind of toilet and urinals and kitchen sink waste from all the other sources of water. The county must approve that, and that's even within our own service area. So that kind of narrows the scope of what a local government can do for the county, because we're a charter county, anything in our, any change to the charter must be compliant with state law. So essentially, the state law is saying, within your own utilities, you know, you can regulate your sources that go into your water treatment system, or your water supply, but you can't prohibit gray water, and you can't use it, you can't prohibit other municipalities from using any type of potable reuse. There's some other, you know, details on that, but fundamentally, that's where we are at the county level. Because these bills are very recent, there hasn't been any case law, there aren't even any rules in place, so, you know, the use of potable reuse is not a thing that currently exists now. They are still in the rulemaking process. It's going to take a while before anything kind of shows up. I think 2030 was a date where, you know, if a municipality or local government needs to, they can use that as an alternate water supply.
Okay, let's, bear with me just for, with a few questions to really bring this out to the public. What you have just said is that we've already been preempted from doing this county-wide. We can't tell the municipalities what to do, but it's even narrower than that. We can't, we can't outlaw it for unincorporated Volusia. As a whole, we can only have a prohibition, if we were to have one, for our service areas. That means the areas where we have water treatment plants established, and the customers that they cover, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So that's where we are. I also want to make it clear that what you're talking about, what we're talking about in potable, is, the very definition of that is for drinking water.
Yes.
We don't have gray water separation and black water separation. So everything we have here is a mixture, and if it was going to be made potable, it would be that combination of water. Potable reuse, I'm just reading from this legal paper, and I'll add this to, this didn't come up yesterday, that you just, that you wrote this down. This has been, I've talked with you, and Attorney Dyer, for several months, and you have worked on this, and even worked through it at my request, through Hurricane Ian's aftermath, when you were buried. And the reason I did is because of what I hope that this brings out, what's, the preemptions and the limits that we have. And personally, I think that's unfortunate. I don't like losing local control. But that's not your fault. You have to tell us what the law says, and then we have to act accordingly. On the second page, it says, "Potable reuse treats the domestic wastewater regardless of source, black water or gray water, to a certain level to be used as a water source to be introduced into a public water supply treatment and distribution facility to meet potable standards, drinkable standards." Furthermore, at the bottom of that page, it says, "The legislature further finds that for those wastewater treatment plants permitted and operated under an approved reuse program by the department, the reclaimed water shall be considered environmentally acceptable and not a threat to public health and safety." Therein lies my concern with this. First of all, I don't think there's anybody in this council that has any argument with reclaimed water. And I don't want to outlaw the use of reclaimed water for irrigation purposes. However, I don't want it to be forced on our residents as drinking water. And this, in my opinion, just declares that it's safe out of thin air. There's no science backing it up. We have to take the government's word that it's safe. And I think we've already proven that that's sometimes dangerous. On the next page, it says, "The 2020 legislative session amended the section governing reuse of reclaimed water, and required the Florida Department of Environmental Protection to initiate rulemaking based on its recommendations of the Potable Reuse Commission's 2020 report. As of the date of its memorandum, rulemaking is still ongoing." And you indicated that. We don't know what the rules are yet. They're still being made. Crucially, the legislature in that bill stated that reclaimed water is deemed a water source for public water supply systems. My second concern, one is that, I don't think, I don't know, none of us know, if we're honest, that it's safe. Number two is that it's coming. The legislature has decided that we need to look at it. It's not coming next week. It's not in any city right now. Daytona Beach's experiment is shut down. So it's not in a city right now, but it's, it's coming. SB 64 specifically authorizes the DEP to convene a technical advisory board to coordinate rulemaking and review its rules for potable reuse, and authorizes utilities to include conceptual plans for potable water reuse projects. And it goes on to state that potable reuse projects are eligible for alternative water supply funding, which will make them attractive to municipalities, perhaps the county, because everybody needs funding. The use of potable reuse water may not be excluded from regional water supply planning." Again, that's my second concern, is that it's, it's coming. It goes on to say at the bottom of the page, that we can expect that it'll, we'll be here. Let me just read it, so nobody thinks I'm being loose with the facts. An article from April of 2021, when discussing SB 64, stated the reused water would be cleaned and available as drinking water around the year 2032. And then on page 17A5, it says, "However, the general rule is that state legislation and the authority it specifically delegates may override county action if that action expressly conflicts with the legislature." And therein lies your concern, that we are preempted.
To a certain extent, yes. So that provision in SB 64 that you, that's in the memo, where it says it cannot be excluded from the regional water supply. While each independent municipality or controller of their service area can decide, we're not interested in potable reuse as an alternative water supply, we can't regulate or legislate to the effect of affecting other service areas. So even though we are a charter county, we can't implement a countywide ordinance, or a charter, that tells other utility services what sources of water are acceptable. So that's, that's the kind of preemption mode that the legislature has chosen, while each cup holder and each utility service provider is kind of the master of their own domain, to the extent you can't affect the others.
Okay. That brings up my two key questions for you. Let me read one more sentence in that same paragraph. "To avoid such conflict, any action by the county must be able to coexist with the states, and in this example, FDEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the Water Management District's rules without frustrating their purposes." I'm assuming, and I don't ask you to assume, but I'm assuming that their purposes are because they know that there's pressure on our aquifer. We saw an economic development report this morning. Florida's growing, we're a desirable state, and so they're trying to protect the aquifer. And our aquifer has a- And our aquifer has a bubble of freshwater above saltwater. And the more we pump out freshwater, the more we will continue to see saltwater coming up. So I think they're right in being concerned with that. I disagree with their source, alternate source. I think we need alternate sources, but I disagree that toilet-to-tap should be one of them. So let me ask you a question. Is it possible, if we asked you to write an ordinance that did not frustrate the law, is it possible to write an ordinance or a charter amendment that would stand up in law?
It would, regardless of whether it's an ordinance or a charter amendment, it would have, we can only regulate within our
Service areas.
Area. So, and even within our service area, you cannot prohibit gray water development. So if someone comes in and actually separates out those, you can't prohibit that. Other than that, the way the law is currently written, it does allow each municipality or each local government or county to regulate that kind of narrow scope, to say prohibit black water as a water source for its utility water plants. That seems to be permissible under the current statutes.
Okay. One other question, because I'm not sure that I understand. It's the next, in the next paragraph down, it says, "The 1968 revision of the state constitution of Florida gave charter counties all powers of local self-government, not inconsistent with general law or with special law approved by vote of the electors." Is that special law approved by a vote of the electors? Would that be a charter amendment?
It could be that, or actually, most likely, it's talking about special local law that goes through a specific process. So there are two things that a charter amendment can't be inconsistent with, the general local law or a specific, or a general law that applies statewide to every single county and municipality, or a special local law that applies to Volusia County, for example. So it has to meet those two rules. It's not, we can ignore the general law and only comply with the special law, for example. So if the, our concern is right now is the general law is saying, for the regulation of potable reuse, you are preempted in this particular ways. So even if you have a special local law, you'd have to go to the legislature to get an exemption and say, Volusia County can prohibit black water, for example.
Right.
So that would be, that would have to be what I think it's speaking to. It's not really talking about whether or not Volusia County can pass a charter amendment, because the charter amendment itself has to be consistent with the general law, which says, you can't prohibit potable reuse on a countywide level, and you must allow gray water technology in your service area.
Lots of restrictions.
Yes, and
We've already lost local control.
Yes.
And the cities have lost even more. But you don't have to respond to that. That's my opinion, that you're speaking strictly on the legalities. Here's what I, here's my conclusion. You make a statement here, "The county may regulate potable reuse within its own service areas." And then the very last page in your conclusion, you go on to say basically the same thing, with black water. As you have described it here, what I would like as an outcome of this brief discussion is for this council to, I'm going to start off offering a compromise. There's two ways we could go. We could go with an ordinance that a future county council could do away with, or a charter amendment, which is very difficult, if not impossible, to get away with. This council, I understand, is not comfortable, I don't think, unless they tell me different today, with changing it permanently. And that's their prerogative. We all have a vote. I would like for the council to request for you to bring back an ordinance that you believe is consistent with the law, to prohibit the use of black water as a potential potable water supply. I believe there's, I'm just going to list a couple of quick reasons why I believe that's necessary. One is that I think that would, if we did that, it would provide a template for the municipalities, if they choose to. But they have to do it on their own. We cannot do it for them.
That's correct.
That's, okay. I can't deem that it's safe, as the state legislature has done. I can't tell people with any degree of assuredly that we're going to give you toilet-to-tap water and it's environmentally or health-wise safe. That's one reason I think we should do this. The second reason is that we should keep our focus on protecting the, our aquifer. I think this takes our eye off of it. I think if we allow toilet-to-tap to go along, it says, we're just going to keep developing the way that we are and worry about the water later, because we can always drink toilet-to-tap. I think our focus needs to be on conservation, on the way that we grow, where we're growing, preserving our water. And I also think that it's, if you look at safety, the last step in the process to make black water drinkable is reverse osmosis, which in itself is, number one, very expensive, but it's also, it's a public hazard. You can't even drink it without adding minerals back to it. But with, for every gallon of reverse osmosis water that you produce, you're also producing, according to the system, seven or eight or nine gallons of waste. What do you do with all that wastewater? You pump it underground, you put it below the drinking water aquifer and hope that in our Swiss cheese limestone aquifer, it doesn't co-mingle? I'm not willing to do that. What do you do with the waste? And then third, we should focus on other potable water supplies, which the county is doing and should continue to do. And also, finally, I think if we, again, all I'm asking for is for you to write an ordinance, bring it back. I can't guarantee that it will get passed, and I'm not requiring that this council pass it. What all I'm asking, I can't. All I am asking them to do is let you write that and look at it and see if it's something that they would pass, because it protects our image as a community as well. How good would this be for a tourism-based economy? Come to Volusia County where we drink toilet-to-tap water. It will be better for our economy. It would be better for companies that are already here, like B. Braun, that depend on a really high quality of water. So that's my ask, council, is that I will lay aside the charter amendment, because I know that you're not comfortable with doing something that's that permanent. I'm just asking you to give Paulo or whoever the legal staff appoints to come back with an ordinance that we can then look at and discuss and see if it meets with your approval. Ben Johnson.
I believe we're trying to find a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. Nobody's talking about this. First time we ever heard about it was Mr. Brower, frankly, has been you bringing it up, and it's all been political. And I kind of have a problem here, that we discussed this in August, and it did not get a second. Now we're three weeks, two and a half weeks, whatever, three weeks from an election, and all of a sudden, we bring this back up again. And it's just not something that we've ever talked about. The only place in Volusia County that's ever been done was a test that was asked by the state, which has been taken down. At the moment, I don't know anywhere in Florida that's doing it. We're regulated all the way around it. I'm going to make a motion that we not address this issue again as long as this council is sitting.
Ben's made a motion that we never talk about this again. Ben, you didn't listen to what I just read. The Florida legislature says it is coming. No, it's not here. That's the time to work on something. That's the time to preempt something. And Paulo, I asked Paulo
Bring it up after the first of the year. I made a motion, is there a second?
Yeah. I don't think, I don't think we heard any of that.
Yeah.
If you guys, I believe the problem is you can't directly speak in the mic. If you kind of back off just a little bit, that should help.
Okay. We have a motion on the table, this is the first thing to deal with, a motion on the table to not discuss it again with this council. That's the motion. And there is a second, unfortunately, for that. So we have a motion to not even discuss this with this council, from Johnson, and a second by Lowery. And then discussion on that. Ben, I'll just, hopefully, you can hear this now. You said we are dealing with something that's not an issue. The state of Florida says it's an issue. They're making plans, they're telling us to get ready. This is a time and the only time to get ready.
It's not the only
It's not the only time, okay. It's not the only time as long as you're here?
It can come up after the first of the year.
Okay. I will bring it up again. The motion is to table it as long as this council remains in place. I think I made a very reasonable, a very measured request, and we have a motion and a second to deny that and not talk about it. Would you please call the roll, Carissa?
Ms. Gertman.
Wait, wait, wait. So, yes, is supporting Ben's motion?
Yes, to not discuss it again.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Dr. Lowery?
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler?
Yes.
Mr. Brower?
No. So the motion passes four to zero, and is that legal to tell the council that we can never discuss something again, Attorney Dyer or Attorney Paulo?
A council can decide whether to take up an issue or not by majority.
Okay. So we just by majority voted that we'll never discuss this again in court as long as this council is here, so.
I think I had my name up prior to the vote, so.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Barb Gertman.
I just wanted to say, discussing, for me, isn't a challenge, is this time. There was no reason for this concern to be brought up at this time. There's no urgency to this concern at this time. So I don't know what the reasonings are. I'm not going to make assumptions about what they are, but I'm not sure why you brought it back at this time, when there's no critical issue in the next 90 days to address, when we have so many other critical issues on our table, coming two weeks behind a major hurricane. So I don't understand it, it's not really relevant, but that's my concern. We can talk, but now was not the time.
Let me just answer that, and then it's over. In my opinion, it's absolutely relevant, because what I just read is that the state of Florida is at this minute writing rules that if we don't act now, there's nothing that we can do. I don't know if there will be anything to do after the rules. You have to act. They might come out tomorrow. I don't know. We don't know when they're going to do it. And our county charter tells us that we have to be, we are responsible, as far as we can control it, the health and safety of our residents. And the Florida legislature has decided for us that this is safe. I can't say that, and nobody can honestly say that.
There's a lot of interpretation. There's a lot of interpretation, again. That's my perspective.
Okay, well, I'm just answering your question.
Yeah, that's my perspective, that's yours.
Why I brought it up, I think it is critical.
Thank you.
And that brings us to item 18, Community Events Update.
Counsel, Kevin Captain, Community Information Director. So to go through the community events, a couple of social media activities that we're working on, and I did mention in the previous meeting, we have the Imagine a Day Without Water, which is October the 20th, and this is to increase awareness of water. And so just watch our social media platforms to be able to see some of the activities we're doing for that. In addition, we're also increasing awareness of Mobility Week, which is a partnership with the Florida Department of Transportation. And this is a week from the 21st to the 28th. And obviously, VOTRAN is very actively participating in this. Also want to bring to your attention the Farm Tour this year. The Farm Tour is on Friday, November 18th. This is where residents can visit local farms and really learn more about the silent economic engine of Volusia County agriculture. There are a handful of really cool farms to check out, both on the east side and the west side. If you're interested, you can just click on volusia.org, go under the calendar of events, and you'll get more information on that. Also, this was mentioned earlier in the meeting today, we have the Veterans Stand Down Event, which is coming up. Also, we also have the Veterans Hall of Fame that we are working on, and we are going to be presenting proclamations to six Volusia County residents who were inducted into the Florida Veterans Hall of Fame, and we will unveil a wall with those pictures. We were going to do that on November the 15th. We've got some scheduling challenges with some of the veterans, so we're going to likely move that to December the 6th. So lots of good activities coming up for veterans and timely for Veterans Day in November. And then also a reminder, the Volusia County Fair is on the horizon, November 3rd to the 13th, and so more information to follow. And again, just a reminder, anyone who's interested in checking out any events, go to volusia.org, click on News, the drop-down box, click on the county calendar, and you can find out all the information you need. You can also call us. Any questions?
Why is the microphone not cracked up for you?
I'm pulling away when I have to use the P.
Is it confused?
Yeah, I mentioned, let me mention, Ms. Wheeler, you know, I apologize for the audiovisual difficulties today. We're certainly doing our best to improvise with a backup audio system, and so I apologize, but I appreciate all your patience. We were unable to livestream as a result of that today, but our team is going to be capturing what we did capture today, and it will be posted on YouTube, just like it normally is. And if you have any requests for any of the slide decks, just feel free to reach out to me, and I'll be happy to get those to you. So we should have that up at our earliest convenience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that brings us to item 19, an update and third extension of the Declaration of Local Emergency for Hurricane Ian, and that will be presented by Russ Brown.
Good afternoon, Counsel, Russ Brown, Assistant County Attorney. Before you is the third extension for the Declaration of a Local Emergency. It's for another week. Take any questions, I think after that, the manager's going to have an update.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve by Gertman, second by Lowery. Any questions for Russ or staff? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And according to my, both of my, that brings us to
Mr. Chair.
Public participation.
Well, as part
Yes.
Mr. Chair, as part of this item, we do have a short update of some of the activities we've done, and I also have something I'd like to talk to the council about, that I'd like to do under the executive order that you just passed. So Kevin could come up. This is much shorter, a little more of a summary of what we've been doing since the last meeting, and a little bit of information on the storm, and then we'll get into some specific actions that I needed to take, and I feel like I need to take under the executive order here. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Ecker. And while Kevin Captain, Community Information Director, quick update on the Hurricane Ian recovery efforts. The damage assessment, the most recent, is 316 million. You might remember from the October the 30th You might remember from the October the 3rd, it was, it started at about 131 million. So significant increases. We've got 5,400 homes damaged, over 600 businesses. 44,825 residents have registered for FEMA assistance. And the Disaster Recovery Center continues to provide service on the Osteen Back location in Daytona Beach. There is also a location in Astor, and there's no wait. So we encourage, if you, if you don't mind taking the drive out to Astor, you can get up there and get service right away with the FEMA representatives. And so far, we've had 915 residents who have visited. So just a little update on the shelter. We had a transitioning that occurred yesterday from the Ocean Center. Those that were impacted by the storm, that were not able to go home, back to their homes because of uninhabitable damage or repair, those people were able to be screened and they were provided a shelter at two of the Baptist churches that, that worked with FEMA, and they, they joined forces to be able to provide sheltering. Yesterday, we had a total of 89 clients at the shelter at the Ocean Center. 21 of those did elect to go to the shelters. We also were working with our Coalition for the Homeless to make sure that we were meeting and provided resources to all of the clients whose individuals' needs were, were different, to make sure that there was a insured seamless transition from that shelter. Today, there's down to, there's down to three people in the Osteen Shelter, so definitely making progress with that. And we just certainly want to thank our partners with that, the American Red Cross, FEMA, the Florida Division of Emergency Management, our Community Services Division, and Emergency Management. So we are continuing to work with FEMA to make sure that eligible residents do get TSA or Transitional Sheltering Assistance. And this is where they're able to provisionally find a motel or hotel room while their home is being repaired, and that's one of the FEMA benefits. And so, right now, 134 residents have been able to receive this benefit, and we're continuing to work with the Hotel Motel Association for more and more of those efforts. A little, a little bit earlier into the recovery, or I should say into the response, we worked with the Sheriff's Office to go out and, and help and assist with water, pet food, meals ready to eat, lots of supplies that we provided through Lake Harney Woods. Yesterday, the state's Emergency Support Function Number Six, which is a function of mass care, emergency assistance, housing, and human services. They were in the county yesterday to assess further the areas impacted mostly by the flooding from Ian, which includes Lake Harney Woods, Stone Island, Osteen, and they also assessed the Independence Farms area on State Road 46. So after the meeting with the points of contacts in these areas, missions and resources are again being provided to these areas, and those are going to continue in the coming days. And again, this is just another reminder, the Disaster Recovery Center, we've got basically two, even though the one is in Lake County, it's still providing service to Volusia County residents. So we're up to over 60 news releases, lots of social media activity with news, and also had Mr. Jim Judge and Ben Bartlett on our radio show to continue to talk about the recovery efforts that we're going through. And just also want to mention too, Bob Davis and Nancy Kiefer have been very important partners in this process, particularly to ensure that they're working closely with FEMA to, you know, ensure that our hotels and motels are, you know, are cooperating with the association and being able to render aid to those in need for our community. So with that, I'll pass this over to Public Works Director, Ben Bartlett.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Ben Bartlett, Public Works Director. So obviously, we're a couple of weeks out from the storm, and Public Works is still going pretty strong in dealing with a lot of the issues associated with it, and I'm just going to give you a little bit of an update on what we're doing as far as the recovery goes. We're dealing with, obviously, you heard today, multiple folks talk about the flooding, talk a little bit about what we got going on on the beach, and of course, after the storm, everybody wants to know about what we're doing with debris. So first up, on the flooding side, you've heard it mentioned, you know, the St. John's River is record stage. The numbers are, we're seeing are astronomical. We think it's, they relayed to us that they think it's crested, but we still have multiple areas underwater, Stone Island, Lake Harney Woods, portions of the land over on Hontune, Astor, and Lemon Bluff. Basically, at this point with those folks, as far as getting the roads open, it's a, it's a waiting game, waiting for that river to, to come down. Did have a meeting the other day with a representative from the St. John's Water Management District, and he talked about how 1,200 square miles of the St. John's River Basin got over 10 inches of rain. So that's 1,200 square miles of the St. John's River Basin got over a 100-year storm event. That's a lot of water that has to move through, get into the river, and eventually work its way out. And then you combine that with the tidal influence that we saw during the storm, you know, that same St. John's Water Management District official said that the St. John's River was actually flowing in the opposite direction all the way down to Lake Monroe. So, you know, a lot of water being dropped in the area, and they can't get out. And so, it's kind of what you saw on the east side of the county as well. I know we had a lot of folks talking about the flooding over there. That much rain, and then all your areas that take that water out, your Tamoka River, your Spruce Creek, the Nova Canal, all those other canals, they just couldn't get the water out. So you have all the rain falling, and normally that water will flow out, but in this instance, it didn't, and it caused significant amounts of flooding. We also have some additional areas. These are mostly areas where there's closed basins, where the water falls, it's like a bowl, and it fills up. Areas that we've seen in the past, Poozer Pond down in Orange City, areas around Deltona and Enterprise, we've reached out to the city, they've reached out to us, as far as we've offered up some areas where they could possibly move some water, and some retention ponds we have that are, that are not full, and we'll continue to work in with those folks and, and provide whatever help we can. And then we've got, you know, we had some water on Taylor Road for, for a while, we're able to get that pumped out. We've got some folks that, down in there, that also have water on their property, they're, they're pumping as well, and we're trying to help with that. So. Up next, we've got the beach. Damage assessment's still ongoing. There's a lot of damage, we've talked about that. However, you know, we've started working on getting those facilities up and running. You know, we have one of the most accessible beaches in the state of Florida, and we understand how important that is to our citizens and our visitors, and, and our staff and our contractors are working really hard to get as many of those assets up and, up and running as possible. I want to talk a little bit real quick about temporary repairs versus permanent repairs. Obviously, any work we do is going to be, we're hoping to get reimbursed by FEMA. We want to make temporary repairs as best we can to provide that access, knowing full well that we're going to come back and make those permanent repairs. And hopefully, both types of repairs will work, will do that, work through the FEMA process to make sure that we get that reimbursement. And on the timeline, I want, you know, it's really important, we can't really start doing anything, demolition or anything like that to any of these assets, until FEMA representatives actually come down and put eyes on it. We've been working, talking to them, meeting with them, and trying to get them down here as quick as possible, so we can get that process started. We want to make sure we maximize the reimbursement, but that's a time-consuming process. Obviously, doing any work on the beach, you have to limit it to outside of turtle nesting season. And then, we've got the issue of the tides and, and when we can access the beach, and it's just, you know, I think the main thing from our point of view is we're going to ask for patience, because this is a unique situation, and we have very limited time to do the work out there, so we're going to be working as fast as we can. We're working hard to provide access for private property owners, to access the beach, to make repairs to their damaged property. We're working in conjunction with our permitting staff and those folks to make sure that they can access the beach through our ramps and get down there and protect their property to ensure that there's not additional damage. We're coordinating, like I said before, with FEMA, DEP, and the Army Corps. I mean, we've had multiple conference calls and meetings. I think, you know, between Jessica and I, we've been on one of those calls just about every day. So we're working hard with those folks to try to push them and, and get that assistance that we need to, to get the beach back up and running. And, and just one last thing, the beach profile. We lost a lot of sand, and the beach profile is lower, and I think that's why you're seeing the water come up higher, more frequently, you know, during the lower tides, there's less time available for those access, so that's something we're going to continue to monitor, and hopefully, hopefully we can get, get to work on maybe, we're working with the Army Corps on getting some sand and those kinds of things, but those are, that's a process that takes a long time, but we're working on it.
May I ask something?
Sure.
How many access do we have open?
Ah, that's the next slide.
Well, see, there you go.
Perfect timing. So, you know, I'm understanding that beach access is hugely important. Up on the screen are the areas that we have open currently. We still have about 15 of our walko, our beach ramps, I should say, severely damaged. Some of those ramps that we think we can repair in-house, make temporary repairs and get them back open, some of them require, are going to require some, as evidenced by the photo on the screen, some really significant repairs. Our coastal inlet parks, the two that we had last time that were closed, Lighthouse Point and Frank Rendon still remain closed, those are going to require significant repairs before that we can get them up and running. And then our dune walkovers, I think, two weeks ago, when I presented last, we had 91 out of 140 closed, so we've gotten 22 of those open with our own staff, and they're working every day as fast as they can to get those, get those open as best we can. And then lastly, debris operations. You know, I came to y'all last time, and we had an initial estimate of 300 cubic yards of vegetation debris and about 180,000, sorry, 300,000 cubic yards of vegetation, 180,000 of construction demolition. We started collecting on October 5th, that was 12 days ago. Through yesterday, we've collected 60,000 cubic yards of vegetated debris, or about 20% of what we've estimated. To put that in perspective, that 60,000 cubic yards is about a football field area piled about 28 feet high. So we're going to have to get that up to about 150 feet high before we get done. We started in a little bit on the CND, you know, it takes some time for that material to get out. I know a lot of the areas that flooded, that's, that material's coming out quick. Your construction demolition, just a reminder, drywall, carpet, furniture, those kinds of things, it's going to come out when we have these flooded events. We've removed a lot of that CND off the beach, that was where we did a lot of it at first, but now, this week, we're really starting to get some of those areas that have the, the high frequency of the flooded homes, because that CND is starting to come out, and we want to get off the street as quick as we can. We still have the debris hotline up and running that folks can call if they have questions. If they're in a city, it'll direct them to, you know, the appropriate agency for them to speak to. If they're in the county, we can help them out. Messaging is key. We're working with Community Information, you know, separate those piles, veg, CND, white goods, appliances, make sure all that's separated so it gets picked up, because I'd hate for a truck to come through someone's neighborhood and they didn't properly separate it, and it doesn't get picked up, and that, you know, obviously can upset some folks. And then finally, the landfill and the transfer station, I mean, those places are, we're running seven days a week, mainly to accommodate, I mean, some of that's to accommodate our, our debris haulers, but we are seeing a significant increase in the amount of folks visiting both those facilities. It's leading to some wait times. We're working through some modifications to how we do things to try to speed that up. But it is, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work out there for those folks, and we're seeing some tonnage numbers that we've never seen before. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Clay. He's going to talk a little bit about what we got going on on the permitting side for helping these folks with their repairs.
Obviously, we want to make sure that we're not being an impediment to the public, and so I can tell you, we've been able to work very well with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. They currently have two staff members sitting with our staff at 440 Beach Street, working on trying to get the temporary permits that we can issue out to those who need it. Also, one of the critical things that I think Jennifer Winters is doing is hunting down sources for beach-compatible sand. There's a lot of people that are concerned about, you know, the fact that we do have this requirement. It's a state requirement that for any kind of sand placed on there has to be compatible, mainly for environmental purposes, but also for geological purposes. So what you're seeing is we're trying to help facilitate those private landowners to get those repairs done. We also have a commitment from DEP to partner with us, and you know, the fact that they have staff members there at 440 Beach Street speaks volumes. We're also still trying to get out to a lot of the areas that are flooded for safety assessments of some of the buildings. Many of these areas, Baxter Point has been flooded for, since the storm hit, and so we're still working to try and get down there. So once we get a handle on that, Palo, Palo is, one more time? Palo is working on trying to come up with an emergency order so that we can allow for some temporary housing via RVs. That's going to be something we'll be bringing up shortly with y'all, so that that way, if anybody is coming forward and they have a damaged structure, they can come forward and, and use their RV if they have one, so they can stay on their property if possible. Tomorrow night, we have an open house. What's going to happen is we send invitations to all five of the coastal cities who received their properties, received impacts, to come to meet in Daytona Beach shores at their community center between 4:00 and 7:00, and you'll have representatives from DEP, Volusia County, and the cities available to help folks kind of work through the permitting process, so that we can give them the temporary permits to get on the beach when they can to make those improvements. Also, you know, just what you're seeing is all levels of government, from the Army Corps, DEP, counties and cities are all working together, realizing that this is damage to people's homes, condominiums, what can we do to help facilitate it? And you're seeing that there's definite movements to try and get things that otherwise wouldn't be allowed going as quickly as possible. So we're working through that. Y'all nicely waived all the fees, so we're still following through with that. We're getting a ton of roof permits for the unincorporated area, we're trying to work through all of that, and really, that's really where we're at.
Just a question, I don't know if it's for you or for Ben. As we travel around the county, we're, we're going to have to deal with roads, some of them county, some of them state, that have been underwater for a long time. From, you know, Lake Harney, Freedom, Independence, all over the county, is there any hope that FEMA will work with us to, because some of those have just sections that need to be raised, some of them, as you discussed yesterday, the, the foundations might be ruined, it's probably going to be like Jell-O. Can we get any outside help? Because it's, it's definitely storm-related.
Yeah. So actually, FEMA has very specific guidance on repairs associated with submerged or flooded roads. Basically, there has to be immediate visible damage. So when the water recedes...
Then we'll know.
Then we'll know. You know, it's really a 50/50 proposition on a road that's been submerged for a significant period of time on whether it's going to be in, you know, really bad shape or whether it'll be fine. It depends how many, you know, what's been driving over it while it's been flooded and that kind of stuff. So, once the water recedes, we'll take a look at it, and I can promise you, any damages that we can attempt to get reimbursed for, we will. Now, on the other side of things, if you have a road that's washed out with that kind of damage that's flooded, there's mitigation grants available post-declared events where you can apply and, and maybe mitigate for the damage, make it more resilient. However, if the road doesn't have any repairs, there's not really a funding source out there for something like that. Specifically, FEMA doesn't consider lack of access a mitigating, something to mitigate for, they would consider something that washes a road away, something you would mitigate for.
So they'd allow you to armor a road or something like that? And we've gotten grants in the past for that type of activity, but just purely raising a road, we have not. So that would be, there are maybe some other resiliency-type grants that we could look at, maybe even through the Department of Transportation, who endured some of the same issues, so.
The State?
State Road 46, for instance, you know, we hear a lot about Lake Harney Woods, it's still underwater, so you cannot approach Lake Harney Woods. still underwater, so you cannot approach Lake Harney Woods from the west, you have to go around to the east from MIMs in that particular way. So, yeah, that's going to be a major issue, I think, for a lot of communities. Reminder, we had over 240 miles of road underwater at some time during this, so it's not just limited to those areas, a lot of other areas also are underwater.
And the state's made quite a bit of money available through their resiliency program. We're in the initial stage of that. I look at Ginger because her office is, the, the grant that we received to update our resilient plan, I forget the exact wording, but we have to have that plan in place and then we can, and identify those areas in, in need, some of these areas that probably flooded, in need of resilience funding, and then we can go turn around and apply for that state funding.
Yeah, that sounds like a logical place to find it, but it also sounds like a long haul for, for all of us to, to get that done. George mentioned 46, has anybody seen drone video or, does anybody have any guess at when that road might open?
Well, the Department of Transit, the Department of Transportation estimated earliest would be the end of this week and probably beginning, beginning of next week.
Is that, that would relieve a lot of the hardships down in that very extreme southern tip of Volusia County?
And that's from the river.
Yes.
I believe, I believe, once the water recedes and they can get a look at it, if there's no damage to their, there's several bridges that, that's affected, if there's no damage around those bridges, it could come pretty quickly.
Yeah, the river down there is, is now a very large lake, as you know. Okay, thank you. Oh, what, this was, I was going to say this to the end, but you're, you and Clay are the ones to ask, Ginger perhaps? Is there, there's a lot of wells that have been covered up, and septic systems covered up with flooding, including pumps and everything, they're now working, people are drawing water, is there a way, is there any program or any way to help them test for E. coli in these, in these wells that have been covered up by filthy water?
I would say that's probably through the DOH.
Yeah, let us check on that.
Yeah.
We can't give you a hundred percent answer right now, let us find out.
Ginger was going to give me a hundred percent answer.
I was going to say what Clay said, it is going to be through the Department of Health, and I don't know exactly what they're doing, but I can certainly check.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. The extreme, that Lake Harney area is very close to Seminole, and I've, I heard today, I don't, I haven't verified it, I got a text today that Seminole is offering free E. coli tests. Is there, you don't, you're not going to know, any of us are not going to know if, if Seminole would include that part of, since it is Volusia County.
The individual Department of Health, for each county, would be handling that. So we can check with-
Thank you.
-them to verify what they're doing.
Thank you. Anybody else? Barb Gertman?
I'm sorry.
I hope not. Well, no, are they, you're still wrapping up 19, are you done?
One, one point. Clay mentioned the item on the temporary living on one's property. I'm going to turn it over to Mike, we've been working on that and we actually, so that we don't have to come back, or people don't have to wait for us to get an ordinance, we can get that started, I believe, under the authority of the emergency declaration.
Mike?
So your staff has the authority to waive some formalities during a state of emergency? During COVID, you did waive, you did suspend enforcement as a directive, the manager did to his staff to, because of the social distancing people were trying to go through the time, you allowed people to stay in their RVs or mobile, mobile homes while they were social distancing. So also, back after the 2004 storms, you did, the county did allow, did suspend enforcement for the same reason. So essentially, in your current code, you restrict RVs and other, our mobile homes from being connected to water, sewer, electric lines for residential purpose unless they're in a recreational vehicle park. So in talking with staff, I think you're, they would have the authority to issue a directive to suspend enforcement, which would be a directive to their staff, if essentially the homeowner had a, pulled a permit and was trying to repair their home to get back in it. We wanted to mention it to you since while we had you here, to see if any of you had objection to that, because otherwise, I think they can go ahead and proceed and do that under the authority, emergency authority that staff has currently.
So you don't need- You don't need a motion?
I, I don't believe so, yeah.
I definitely think that's-
If anybody's opposed, they can speak up, but yeah, because that allows the, the homeowner to stay on their property for security reasons, if nothing else.
Exactly, and I think that's the desire in speaking with the governor and others' office when we were talking about this, our, our problem is going to be relatively small compared to what you see down in southwest Florida, so, so I appreciate that and thank you, and we will continue on that track.
Did I hear, though, they, they had to have a permit to rebuild in order to do that?
Go ahead, Paul.
Because I'd say, let's just waive it totally until this is over.
Yes. Well, it wa, it was tied to them pulling a permit, just so we knew that.
I think we need to just waive it at the moment, because some of them haven't gotten to it, may not know how to get to it yet, and let's just waive it until the emergency's over, and we can always cancel when it is.
Yeah, yes, sounds good.
We can, we can work in that.
I have another question.
Fred Lowery had a question.
Yeah, does this allow, what we're doing here, for someone, let's say their house is underwater and they're staying in their RV on their property, can, would this enable them to have a temporary electric service put in?
We'll have to take, we'll have to look on, at that on a tem, case-by-case base, case-by-case basis.
I know a couple of situations over in my district where people, I mean, they're spending $60, $70 a day or more-
For a generator.
-on fuel and generator, where if they could get a temporary electric service put in-
I think that's also where, in the past, we tied it in with a permit-
Okay.
-because like a construction of a home, see, you get a temporary service line put in that's on a separate pole or something of that nature, but we, we'll look into what that would, would mean, and we're certainly going to err on the side of helping people out.
I, I would say that that'd be one of the benefits, I think, to tying it to a permit, if that was a concern. So if, if, if it's okay with council, we'll, we'll take this back and see, study, find out the best way to give relief.
I've got two families in particular I've talked to that, that are staying up on higher ground in their RV and their house is basically ruined, and they're going to have to rebuild and they were sure would like some relief on the ability to put in temporary electric service. So there's nothing that's going to hinder that at this time if they contact.
What we're hearing is you're giving us the authority to allow people to stay in temporary structures, RVs on their property. If they're coming in for a temporary electric and it's tied to the permitting for the improvements or repairs, we have no problem doing that.
Okay, awesome.
I think that's a sense of the council. George, anything else to add?
I have a couple items, if, I didn't know if you were going to do-
Oh.
-public participation first.
I didn't have any, but I do now.
Okay.
So-
Then I'll be back in a minute.
Okay. John Nicholson.
I'm not as tall as Russ. John Nicholson, Daytona Beach side. Last meeting, I talked to you about Jenny brought before the city commission the idea that the loss of trees create heating area in our urban areas. The gentleman that spoke earlier talked about an oak tree sucks up 40,000 gallons of water in a pine, 50,000 gallons. With all the trees that we're losing, that's a lot of water that would not be sitting around at this point. So I'm asking you again, when we do things, think holistically, because if we had replaced all those trees, when we put in the roadways, et cetera, they would have absorbed all of that water. I also talked to you about four years ago, again, a while ago, with regards to the reefs off the coast. About 20 years ago, some gentleman from Cocoa came up to Glenn Ritchie's kitchen cabinet to present an idea of creating reefs off the coast for surfing. But some of the side effects would be that it would build up the sand off the coast for up to 400 feet every year, and it would stay there permanently. One of the other side effects is it would prevent the massive damage from hurricanes. So that what we did south, like the shore is south, that massive damage would not have occurred had we had these reefs off the coast. So if that indeed is the case, I've asked you to look into it, if that, if their idea is valid, if it is true and it does that, it would have prevented a tremendous amount of loss to the, not only the owners themselves, but to the community, because all that damage would have been there. We could have gone right back into, into mode immediately. So like the flooding that we've had downtown Daytona Beach for like 70, 80 years, if we work on it, we can solve it, so I'm asking you at least look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Yes, sir. A couple more storm-related items. First off, under that emergency power, and actually, in any case, there's an emergency, I do have the authority to make a purchase, but in accordance with the policy and procedure, I have to report to the county council at the next available meeting. I have two purchases to report. One is with Central Florida aggregate materials, we needed 4,000 tons of lime rock base for the roads that we know are damaged. That PO amount is for $127,040. And also, as you know, our Dickerson Library down on Keats Street was the most severely damaged property that we had. We feel it's essential that we get access back into that area with computers, Wi-Fi, and at least some collection of materials to meet the community needs. And I think that the emergency part of this really has to do with us and the whole southeastern Florida, or southwestern, are going after these buildings. So we needed to get a modular setup, price of the PO is $76,807. We went ahead and ordered that to try to get in the queue to get that as soon as we could, because if we waited, we would be, I think, a lot farther down. I also wanted to mention, there was a comment earlier today about people, the managers and cities, counties getting together, other, also other agencies. I just wanted to report, you know, the, the city managers have been wonderful to work with and, you know, during the storm and then a week after the storm, we met every single day, we continue to meet a couple of times a week, so we do work on these things together, and I just want the citizens to know, it is a very coordinated effort, it's one of the great work, one of the many great things that Jim Judge, his folks coordinate all year round to make sure that things like that do go smoothly when it does happen. And I also want to say, you know, we have not been alone, other agencies, I think, have come at a quicker rate and, and probably listened better than they've ever had before. So I definitely would like to, you know, shout out to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, the FDOT, the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, in addition to what Ben reported, I mean, they sent a team of engineers here on the ground to look at what was going on out there, and that's very, that's not common. So the governor's office, Senator Rubio's office, Representative Leake, all of our other elected officials have been very accessible and very receptive, and things like we mentioned, the meeting coming up on Wednesday night over in the shores, where you're going to have a lot of these groups there in attendance, so that we can get people, not just get information, but maybe get something actually accomplished towards the permitting or towards their plan of action. So again, I want to thank all those agencies, and we will continue to be working with them. It's probably, again, the most coordination I have seen. I do have a couple non-storm-related things to report. One, I, there's been some discussion of this and I, and some notifications have gone out to doctors' offices. We're in the middle of negotiations right now to make things just, you know, so if you never, if I ever think I'm not busy, I can show you my calendar. The, right now, we have negotiations going on with Cigna, who is our representative insurance, they, they manage our plan, and they're in negotiations with some of the major providers, and one being Halifax Hospital and their network. We have a meeting Thursday with Halifax, so you, there may be a letter, I think there will be a letter going out saying that people who use Halifax, they may not be included in the network, they would still be covered if they were there for an emergency, a trauma, but they may be treated as a non-network provider. But I just want to let everyone know, we're still working on that, but there's rules, letters had to go out with a certain timeframe by law, so they're out there, but we continue to work this issue, and we're committed because we realize we want to have for our employees the ability to use all of the available healthcare providers in our area. So we'll continue to work that, but I did not want that to be a surprise to you. And lastly, just, I know you all received it, but as I, you asked me to do, we did do a desk audit for the deputy clerk position that was given to all of you. I don't think it really requires much explanation, just that the classification based on what we found, again, that, our position is unique as a county, it's different than the cities, and it's, this position does not, it's not why, it says clerk, it is different than what you would see even outside of the county. Remember, like our case, the clerk of the court, she does, she does just do court, but in many other counties, that clerk position does really is your, almost like your CFO. So, but we have a CFO, we have these other positions, and, and we feel through the desk audit and the comparison that everybody is, the position is classified correctly. And that's all I have.
County attorney?
Yes, sir. At your September 20th meeting, a member of the public brought up the concept of increasing the, the tourist development tax rate, so I did send you out an email just to explain that when we went back and looked, confirmed that we're currently levying at the maximum amount that the law would allow for TDT and CDT, so the tourist development tax and convention development tax, at 3% each, so 6% total. CDT, so the tourist development tax and convention development tax, 3% each, so 6% total. At the time, you were interested or directed us to look into preparing a presentation for you on that, but in light of that, we're certainly happy to do that, but in light of that information, I didn't know if council still really wanted us to come forward with an agenda item, if we're already at the maximum rate. So I thought I would bring it up to you.
Thank you.
So if you would like us to proceed, I will with an agenda item. I had a feeling there may be, good chance maybe you wouldn't at this point.
Yeah, we know what the answer is.
Okay. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, council members, Barb Gertman.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to say that I echo what George said about having the support of a lot of the leadership at the federal, state, and local level. We were able to sit down and really have a good discussion with Senator Rubio, and I asked him about federal criteria that's restrictive, and if we can get some support, and especially for our affordable housing and housing challenges, to have more flexible access, if he can help us with, with any of those opportunities to, to be able to free up, to spend dollars the way we need to in, in our region, and especially after this concern. There was also a meeting with Transportation Secretary Purdue and Local John Tyler, Secretary for Region Five, and really good discussions about, discussions for resiliency and how we can respond after the storm and, and work together in partnership to be able to move a number of concerns forward and know that we're all at the table together, including St. John's Water Management, Mr. Register, and Mr. Purcell. So I think it's real important to know that we are, we have those relationships, we are here trying to make a difference and talking about what changes can be made and supported for, for customizing what Volusia County needs to be able to respond. And I'm just really pleased that, again, they asked for the meeting with us to be able to have those discussions. So they're getting in front of it to be here for us, and I, I know for one, I certainly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Johnson?
Yeah, these storms brought up a little something that I think that maybe might help us out as council people, and that's to get us some kind of a window plac that we can put in the cars. You know, people sometimes will think we're just gawkers instead of actually doing our business, whether it's something like a storm, or whether it's some like special events on the beach side of Daytona that we need to look at, but something that we can, you can issue to council people, but they can put in the window so they're readily recognized as to who they are. You know, me being the former sheriff, most of the law enforcement knows me, but they probably don't know some of the other people, and they have to talk their way through or not get through. So I think it's something that we really need to look at, and that's all I got.
Like a, like a bullseye target?
What does, I think it would identify, because when there's road, you know, when the officers are, or traffic control people see people, they're still going to check your ID and things, but if they see something on your vehicle, they know that, like you say, they're not assuming you're a gawker or something.
They can see who you are. Your activity has a.
Exactly. So yes, it's helpful. We'll come up with something like that.
Dr. Lowery?
I'm good.
Heather Post, Danny Robbins, Billy Wheeler.
Okay, just a few things. First of all, I want to thank again staff. The meeting on Wednesday was something that I kind of was hearing from the community, the beachside community. No one can describe what you see when you're on the beach and you're looking back at, at the beachfront properties. 22 homes in Wilbur that are at risk, along with condos and everything else. So I just made a phone call to Suzanne and said, I think this is something that would be helpful for the area, and she took it from there. And we've got this, with everybody's help, we've got this amazing meeting that I think it's going to be really beneficial, and I know the citizens really appreciate it, that we're really trying to help them out as much as we can. And I just thank you for all your efforts on getting that done. This thing is driving me crazy. And, and George, I will say too, that the cities, all of the cities in my district that I've been going to and speaking with the managers and everything, they're really appreciative of the communication. That was one of the things I ran on way back in 2016, was the communication between the cities and the county I felt really needed a big boost, and you've done that, you've accomplished that. They are so appreciative and really raved about the, the amount of communication, and especially from you. Very appreciated with their commissioners, their council members, and their staff. So I just thank you for all of that. So glad to see this meeting coming up on, on Wednesday. This is extremely important. I want to be there with all the residents in that area. I just want them to know that we're all there, standing beside them. It is really, really so, so very sad. Let's see, I think that is it. Oh, and what Ms. Gertman has said, the communication, 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 and the, the people that we have, that we're able to pick up that phone and make a phone call to, and each and every one of us I know have been using those relationships. I was doing that with the Florida Power, you know, the FDOT, everyone else, and it was good to have a phone number that I could call and say, hey, what are you doing about this, so I could answer for the citizens. This has been really, really a trial in going over onto the, off of the beach side, onto the mainland side, and going through my flooded areas. It's just a hard thing to handle, but I'm, I'm so proud of staff coming by and saying, we got to think outside the box, you know, let's, let's, you know, not having to have the permits and the fees and this and that and the other. I shouldn't say the permits, the fees, has been so beneficial. I, I just appreciate so much all that staff is doing to help us represent the citizens in our, in our county. It's, it's been a challenge for all of us, but thank you so very much.
And just a couple things from me. I'll pick up on that, on what Billy talked about on the Wednesday meeting. It's, it's a shame that this is not being livestreamed because the public really, that's an answer to so many questions that we are getting. It's a place where the public can go and perhaps get some answers. I did look while we're, while we were talking, it is in, on the homepage of our webpage, volusia.org. I'm assuming, Kevin, it's on Facebook and social media. Do you have any idea when the YouTube will be up, that people could? For the meeting with his discussion about that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin Captain, Community Information. First of all, the one question about Wednesday's meeting. We have it on social media, we have it on Nextdoor, we have May Day News release, we're pushing it out to the best of our extent possible, it's on our pinned page, and it's been shared with our coastal cities as well. The YouTube video, one of our guys is editing, editing the first part of the meeting so far, so as soon as possible.
It'll be on, okay. It's on the website, it says, I just glanced at it because we're in a meeting here, but it says the Wednesday meeting, is it directed just to coastal residents or some of the people that are now lake property owners? Is it open to anybody in the county? Suzanne's going to take that.
Sorry. The focus, I'm sorry, the focus of the extended office hours tomorrow are with all the permitting staff regarding coastal permits. However, FDEP, who I really am grateful for their cooperation and, and joint efforts at hosting this tomorrow night, said they will have staff there to deal with non-coastal issues. When they've done these open houses with local governments before, there's inevitably questions that are outside the coastal box. So I think if there are people who have state permitting questions, FDEP will be staffed to answer them, and we'll have staff there who can assist as well.
Thank you. We'll have zoning and building staff there to address any of those questions if they come up, so therefore, we should be able to answer them. Also, just to add, our code enforcement officers went and handed out the flyer to all the properties that we posted. And I know that Daytona Beach shores did the same exact thing. I don't know about the other cities.
And I contacted Wilbur. I knew that that was a situation, so they were doing it to their mailing list, and Ponce Inlet also did too, so.
Clay, can you stay here a second? You were my second, now I don't have to ask you to walk down. Yesterday, we talked, I get a lot of questions about this. We talked about the, the low-impact development. You told me we're negotiating with, negotiating with the University of Florida now for a contract. We got the, the grant money in, and then you said in May of 2023, what happens on May of 2023? Just give us a, just a brief update.
That's when we're supposed to have all the drafts finalized, so that that way we can proceed forward with any comp plan amendments, land development regulation changes.
So a lot of work being done until May 23rd. I didn't want to give the impression that we're not doing anything until May.
And we'll be presenting our findings as they go along to the Enrak Group. They've already held their meeting. They were very, they were very much engaged in that topic, and Ginger indicated to them that we're going to be taking it through them as we go through it, so therefore, there will not be further delay of, okay, we've completed it, now let's put it through another review process.
Okay. Thank you. There is a LID conference that, that's this week, Thursday and Friday in Rockledge, that ends up coming at a bad time. I know for other council members especially that really wanted to go, but it's busy. I'm going to still go. I was really glad to see that a number of the staff is, is going. George?
I did something at the end, I'm sorry.
Okay. I thought you were going to tell me I wasn't going to the LID conference.
No.
My last thing is that the, I had sent an email, and you replied by email, I think, to every council member on the, at the last meeting, it was asked that the, the clerk's pay scale be looked at in comparison to other counties and then brought back, and you have dealt with that in, in an, it wasn't on the agenda today, but just, where does that stand?
Well, that's what I mentioned when, when I said the desk audit, that also gave the classification for the deputy clerk and the, and then that has the pay scale. So the pay scale is accurate, and, and our deputy clerk is within that pay scale.
Nope, then we've covered everything else. The, I assume you've gotten letters from every one of the council members about the response from staff on emergencies around the county. They're plentiful. We are a big county, and a lot of the county is underwater. And there's immediate needs from people that just don't have immediate resolutions until water disappears and we, dissipates, and we can't make that happen quicker. One of the, I'll just end with this, one of, when I went down to Lake Harney and Independence and, and Freedom area, and it was, well, it came up down there, one of their biggest concerns was we can't get our mail, we can't, and the mail won't come, they won't drive through any water. It used to be through snow or sleet or hail, didn't say flood. And I know, you know, it's, it's hard to tell people, there's not a darn thing I can do about that. Those are federal laws. It does seem like, down there, their mail comes from another county, it comes from Seminole. They have Seminole addresses, although they're Volusia County residents. I, you know, I don't know if saying this will have any positive effect on it, but it would really be nice if the post office would send a truck as far as they could get on their road that's dry. The residents will go there and, they'll walk through the water. They need their, they need to pay bills, they need to receive.
Mr. Chair, do you know if, I'm assuming they probably have, their mailboxes are in.
Gang boxes.
Gang boxes. When you were down, did you happen to see if that particular area was dry or?
It's dry where the gang boxes are, but you got to drive down Morgan Lauderman, which is impassable for a car, a truck.
I think we could, I'll ask our team if there's a way, maybe not daily, but if we could gather mail at a certain period of time, or like you say, meet the mail delivery person and bring, or have one of our, you know, like fire unit or someone bring them in for.
Transport them in, yeah.
To do that. And they may not be willing to do that, but we could at least make the ask to find out if there is a way.
You'd have to transport them. They have actually sent people to the post office to pick up their mail, and it's a federal offense. You can't give somebody else your mail.
Right.
You can bring in their license, and the people aren't really, they're a little leery about giving their license to somebody too, and I don't blame them.
Well, I can say, I think the idea would be to bring a postal person.
To haul the mail.
With the mail. That would be, again, something that we can put in that request to find out.
Yeah. Yes. Did you have something to wrap up, Kevin?
Actually, I have something to wrap up, so.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to, on that topic, in collaboration with Jim Judge, I'm just going to reiterate what the state ESF 6 has committed. That includes Lake Harney Woods with the 180 families that are there. They're bringing a semi-tractor to that area with an immense amount of water, cleaning supplies, dog and, dog and cat food, toilet paper, feminine products, hay and other farm feed, and not just Lake Harney Woods. ESF 6 is also assisting Stone Island, Osteen, the Independence area near 46. And that's also being done in collaboration with the Emergency Management Division and the Community Services Departments. We're in collaboration with them, and this email just was from yesterday that confirmed some of the delivery of those, those items. So supplies and help are continuing to be in progress.
And that's how I started off. The response has been tremendous, oftentimes instantaneous. I know I've talked to the Florida Emergency Response Team that Mr. Judge is also working with. I'll, I'll end with that, with, I did go, as was brought up this morning, to the Midtown Meeting, invited to go to talk to residents about flood, about the, after the, the results of the hurricane. And I asked staff if they could supply somebody just to give information about help that was available. Well, Jim Judge stepped up and said, I'll do it, and I was surprised, because I know how busy it is. And Jim, I thanked you that night. He went, met me there and spoke, he brought in a ton of information and spoke, not for too long, but a long time to give the information. And I, I just want to tell you publicly again how much I appreciate the effort that you have gone to throughout this whole emergency. You rise to the occasion and exceed our expectations, and, and you're, you know, there's a lot of people behind you, I'm not leaving them out. I just want you to know that you were well-received there and appreciated, and I didn't want that to be tainted by anything else that was said, so thank you again. And, he's already had two times. George, do you want to?
Just a quick, and this is, I hate to be on a somber note, but I would just ask for everyone, thoughts and prayers to go out to, to Dale Arrington and the Arrington family. During the storm period, Larry Arrington, a former, one of the former managers, and there's not many of us, passed away. It's announced, I think, in the paper today. So just our thoughts and prayers went out. So just our thoughts and prayers went out.
Storm-related?
He was, he was definitely one of the pioneers in the 70s. He came on one early portion of this government, and really set the tone for a lot of things, great things that happened in the, in the years to come. So, and so I just, thoughts go out to there. I was fortunate, actually, he hired me, so, back in, back in the day. Thank you.
Well, okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And at 3:45, if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.